All aboard the Nazi-themed subway car? You heard right. New York City's strap hangers were shocked this morning to find themselves riding this car decked out in Nazi-inspired propaganda straight out of the Third Reich. The Nazi-themed eagle, iron cross, and symbols from Japan's Imperial Army of World War II. They're all there. So what's going on?
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Hard to believe, but it's an ad campaign for amazon.com's new streaming program, The Man in the High Castle, a sci-fi thriller that depicts an alternative America. What if we had lost the war and the Nazis were in charge? The ads are considered to be especially in-your-face because they cover every seat in this Forty Second Street shuttle at Times Square. Imagine coming to work and seeing this. Reaction, as you can imagine, is quite intense. Worst-taste marketing stunt ever? What the heil? And those are some of the gentler headlines.
I think it's offensive. Yeah, I don't think it belongs here.
An MTA spokesman was quoted as saying the campaign meets its guidelines for content-neutral ads. Unless you're saying you believe Amazon is advocating for a Nazi takeover of the United States, then it meets the standards. But a spokesman for the Anti-Defamation League of New York is concerned about the context of the ads. On the television program which explains this is the notion of an America controlled by Hitler, you get that context. On the train, a Nazi symbol is viscerally offensive. The MTA spokesman declined to say how much Amazon was paying for the ads, which will run to December fourteenth.
Context of white supremacy. Gus T. Renegade in for another broadcast, hopefully to share constructive information on the system of white supremacy. Today's date, Thursday, February ten, two thousand twenty-two, so I have been told. This is our second study session on Philip K. Dix, The Man in the High Castle. So last week, we did the first three chapters of the book, which is totally, totally different from the television show that we heard about context, but totally different. I had not, I think I said last week, hey, I've not seen the television show. I've seen like one and a half episodes. I'm not sufficiently motivated to watch forty hours, four seasons worth of television. And I was even less motivated once I started reading. And I kept seeing that, hey, the book and the TV show are totally different, which I kind of was guessing at last week, because I was like, man, like, I haven't seen very much, but like, do they have that in the TV show? Were they talking about exterminating the population on the continent of Africa? Is that in the TV show? Because I never heard that. Like, we probably would have read this way sooner if I knew that was in the TV show. I haven't heard that. And some of the other things that they talk about, like, I think it might be just kind of the general premise that the Nazis control half of the US, Japan the other half, we lost World War II. I think the premise, but the actual narrative, I think, is very different between the two. So again, if anybody has seen the TV show as a reading along, and you want to compare and contrast, kind of point out some of the major differences in the book as a reading along, feel free. The audio that we heard at the beginning, that was a part of the advertising campaign. Again, I think The Man in the High Castle was a part of Amazon's first wave of releases of streaming content in terms of originally produced streaming content from Amazon. Like, this was a big deal. And then it was on for four years, and they terrorized everybody on the subway in New York with all of their Nazi paraphernalia and what have you. What a way to kick things off. Dr. Wellesley talked about that at the Wellesley Institute. We heard that last week, but there was lots of hubbub about all of this. Dr. Wellesley again said, heck, system of racism, white supremacy. Lots of justifications, often very tacky, for displaying Nazi symbolism, swastikas, Adolf Hitler, symbolism of white supremacy racism. Anywho, without further ado, we will go ahead and get started. Again, Philip K. Dix, who also authored The Minority Report. No people are familiar with that. Sci-fi legend, author, even though he died at the young age of fifty-three, I think young, young age of fifty-three. He wrote quite a bit before he expired. We will go ahead and get started. Philip K. Dix, The Man in the High Castle, context of white supremacy. This is audio segment one.
Chapter four. As Frank Frink watched his ex-employer waddle down the corridor and into the main work area of W.M. Corporation, he thought to himself, "The strange thing about Wyndham Manson is that he does not look like a man who owns a factory. He looks like a tenderloin bum, a wino, who has been given a bath, new clothes, a shave, haircut, shot of vitamins, and set out into the world with five dollars to find a new life." The old man had a weak, shifty, nervous, even ingratiating manner, as if he regarded everyone as a potential enemy stronger than he, whom he had to fall on and pacify. "They're going to get me," his manner seemed to say. And yet, old W.M. was really very powerful. He owned controlling interests in a variety of enterprises, speculations, real estate, as well as the W.M. Corporation factory. Following after the old man, Frink pushed open the big metal door to the main work area. The rumble of machinery, which he had heard around him every day for so long, sight of men at the machines, air filled with flash of light, waste dust, movement. There went the old man. Frink increased his pace. "Hey, Mr. W.M.," he called. The old man had stopped by the hairy-armed shop foreman, Ed McCarthy. Both of them glanced up as Frink came toward them. Moistening his lips nervously, Wyndham Manson said, "I'm sorry, Frank. I can't do anything about taking you back. I've already gone ahead and hired someone to take a place, thinking you weren't coming back after what you said." His small, round eyes flickered with what Frink knew to be an almost hereditary evasiveness. It was in the old man's blood. Frink said, "I came for my tools, nothing else." His own voice, he was glad to hear, was firm, even harsh. "Well, let's see," W.M. mumbled, obviously hazy in his own mind as to the status of Frink's tools. To Ed McCarthy, he said, "I think that would be in your department, Ed. Maybe you can fix Frank here up. I have other business." He glanced at his pocket watch. "Listen, Ed, I'll discuss that invoice later. I have to run along." He patted Ed McCarthy on the arm and then trotted off, not looking back. Ed McCarthy and Frink stood together. "You came to get your job back," McCarthy said after a time. "Yes," Frink said. "I was proud of what you said yesterday." "So was I," Frink said. "But Christ, I can't work it out anywhere else." He felt defeated and hopeless. "You know that." The two of them had in the past, often talked over their problems. McCarthy said, "I don't know that. You're as good with that flex cable machine as anybody on the coast. I've seen you whip out a piece in five minutes, including the rouge polishing, all the way from the rough kratex, and except for the welding." "I never said I could weld," Frink said. "Did you ever think of going into business on your own?" Frink, taken by surprise, stammered, "What doing? Jewelry? Ah, for Christ's sake." "Custom, original pieces, not commercial." McCarthy beckoned him over to a corner of the shop, away from the noise. "For about two thousand bucks, you could set up a little basement or garage shop. One time, I drew up designs for women's earrings and pendants. You remember? Real, modern, contemporary." Taking a scratch paper, he began to draw, slowly, grimly. Peering over his shoulder, Frink saw a bracelet design, an abstract with flowing lines. "Is there a market?" All he had ever seen were the traditional, even antique, objects from the past. "Nobody wants contemporary American. There isn't any such thing, not since the war." "Create a market," McCarthy said with an angry grimace. "You mean sell it myself?" "Take it into retail shops, like that, what's it called, on Montgomery Street, that big ritzy art object place." "American Artistic Handcrafts," Frink said. He never went into fashionable, expensive stores such as that. Few Americans did. It was the Japanese who had the money to buy from such places. "You know what retailers like that are selling?" McCarthy said. "And getting a fortune for? Those goddamn silver belt buckles from New Mexico that the Indians make, those goddamn tourist trash pieces all alike, supposedly native art." For a long time, Frink regarded McCarthy. "I know what else they sell," he said finally. "And so do you." "Yes," McCarthy said. They both knew, because they had both been directly involved and for a long time. W.M. Corporation's state-of-the-legal business consisted in turning out wrought iron staircases, railings, fireplaces, and ornaments for new apartment buildings, all on a mass basis from standard designs. For a new forty-unit building, the same piece would be executed forty times in a row. Ostensibly, W.M. Corporation was an iron foundry, but in addition, it maintained another business from which its real profits were derived. Using an elaborate variety of tools, materials, and machines, W.M. Corporation turned out a constant flow of forgeries of pre-war American artifacts. These forgeries were cautiously but expertly fed into the wholesale art object market to join the genuine objects collected throughout the continent. As in the stamp and coin business, no one could possibly estimate the percentage of forgeries in circulation. And no one, especially the dealers and the collectors themselves, wanted to. When Frink had quit, there lay half-finished on his bench a Colt revolver of the frontier period. He had made the molds himself, done the casting, and had been busy hand-smoothing the pieces. There was an unlimited market for small arms of the American Civil War and frontier period. W.M. Corporation could sell all that Frink could turn out. It was his specialty. Walking slowly over to his bench, Frink picked up the still-roughened bird ramrod of the revolver. Another three days, and the gun would be finished. Yes, he thought, it was good work. An expert could have told the difference, but the Japanese collectors weren't authorities in the proper sense, had no standards or tests by which to judge. In fact, as far as he knew, it had never occurred to them to ask themselves if the so-called historic art objects for sale in West Coast shops were genuine. Perhaps someday they would, and then the bubble would burst, the market would collapse even for the authentic pieces. Aggressum's law, the fakes would undermine the value of the real. And that, no doubt, was the motive for the failure to investigate. After all, everyone was happy. The factories, here and there in the various cities, which turned out the pieces, they made their profits. The wholesalers passed them on, and the dealers displayed and advertised them. The collectors shelled out their money and carried their purchases happily home to impress their associates, friends, and mistresses. Like post-war bootle paper money, it was fine until questioned. Nobody was hurt until the Day of Reckoning, and then everyone equally would be ruined. But meanwhile, nobody talked about it. Even the men who earned their living turning out the forgeries, they shut their own minds to what they made, kept their attention on the mere technical problems. "How long since you tried to do original designing?" McCarthy asked. Frink shrugged. "Years. I can copy accurately as hell, but..." "You know what I think? I think you've picked up the Nazi idea the Jews can't create, that they can only imitate and sell, middlemen." He fixed his merciless scrutiny on Frink. "Maybe so," Frink said. "Try it. Do some original designs, or work directly on the metal. Play around, like a kid plays." "No," Frink said. "You have no faith," McCarthy said. "You've completely lost faith in yourself, right? Too bad, because I know you could do it." He walked away from the workbench. "It is too bad," Frink thought. "But nevertheless, it's the truth. It's a fact. I can't get faith or enthusiasm by willing it, deciding to." "That McCarthy," he thought, "is a damn good shop foreman. He has the knack of needling a man, getting him to put out his best efforts, to do his utmost in spite of himself. He's a natural leader. He almost inspired me for a moment there." But McCarthy had gone off now. The effort had failed. "Too bad I don't have my copy of the oracle here," Frink thought. "I could consult it on this, take the issue to it for its five thousand years of wisdom." And then he recalled that there was a copy of the Y-ching in the lounge of the business office of W.M. Corporation. So he made his way from the work area, along the corridor, hurriedly through the business office to the lounge. Seated in one of the chrome and plastic lounge chairs, he wrote his question out on the back of an envelope. "Should I attempt to go into the creative private business outlined to me just now?" And then he began throwing the coins. "The bottom line was a seven, and so was the second, and then the third. The bottom chigram in Xi'an," he realized. That sounded good. Xi'an was the creative. Then line four, an eight, Yin, and line five, also eight, a Yin line. Good Lord, he thought excitedly. "One more Yin line, and I've got hexagram eleven, Tai, peace. Very favorable judgment." Or, his hands trembled as he rattled the coins, "A Yang line, and hence hexagram twenty-six, Ta Chu, the taming power of the great. Both have favorable judgments, and it has to be one or the other." He threw the three coins. Yin, a six. It was peace. Opening the book, he read the judgment. "Peace. The small departs, the great approaches. Good fortune, success." So I ought to do as Ed McCarthy says, open my little business. Now the six at the top, my one moving line, he turned the page. What was the text? He could not recall, probably favorable because the hexagram itself was so favorable. Union of heaven and earth. But the first and last lines were outside the hexagram always, so possibly the six at the top. His eyes picked out the line, read it in a flash. "The wall falls back into the moat. Use no army now. Make your commands known within your own town. Perseverance brings humiliation." "My busted back," he exclaimed horrified. And the commentary. "The change alluded to in the middle of the hexagram has begun to take place. The wall of the town sinks back into the moat from which it was dug. The hour of doom is at hand." It was, beyond doubt, one of the most dismal lines in the entire book, of more than three thousand lines. And yet, the judgment of the hexagram was good, which was he supposed to follow? And how could they be so different? It had never happened to him before. Good fortune and doom mixed together in the oracle's prophecy. What a weird fate, as if the oracle had scraped the bottom of the barrel, tossed up every sort of rag, bone, and turd of the dark, then reversed itself and poured in the light like a cook gone barmy. "I must have pressed two buttons at once," he decided. Jammed the works and got this schlemmazel's-eye view of reality, just for a second, fortunately. Didn't last. Hell, he thought, it has to be one or the other. It can't be both. You can't have good fortune and doom simultaneously. Or can you? The jewelry business will bring good fortune. The judgment refers to that. But the line, the goddamn line, it refers to something deeper, some future catastrophe, probably not even connected with the jewelry business, some evil fate that's in store for me anyhow. War, he thought. Third World War, all frigging two billion of us killed, our civilization wiped out, hydrogen bombs falling like hail. Like a vault, he thought. What's happening? Did I start it in motion? Or is someone else tinkering, someone I don't even know? Or the whole lot of us? It's the fault of those physicists and that synchronicity theory, every particle being connected with every other. You can't fart without changing the balance in the universe. It makes living a funny joke with nobody around to laugh. I open a book and get a report on future events that even God would like to file and forget. And who am I? The wrong person, I can tell you that. I should take my tools, get my motors from McCarthy, open my shop, start my piddling business, go on despite the horrible line, be working, creating in my own way right up to the end, living as best I can, as actively as possible, until the wall falls back into the moat for all of us, all mankind. That's what the oracle is telling me. Fate will poleaxe us eventually anyhow, but I have my job in the meantime. I must use my mind, my hands. The judgment was for me alone, for my work, but the line, it was for us all. "I'm too small," he thought. "I can only read what's written, glance up, and then lower my head and plot along where I left off, as if I hadn't seen. The oracle doesn't expect me to start running up and down the streets, squalling and yammering for public attention." "Can anyone alter it?" he wondered. "All of us combined, or one great figure, or someone strategically placed, who happens to be in the right spot. Chance, accident, and our lives, our world, hanging on it." Closing the book, he left the lounge and walked back to the main work area. When he caught sight of McCarthy, he waved him over to one side where they could resume talk. "The more I think about it," Frink said, "the more I like your idea." "Fine," McCarthy said. "Now, listen, here's what you do. You have to get money from Wyndham Manson." He winked, a slow, intense, frightened twitch of his eyelid. "I figured out how. I'm going to quit and go in with you. My design, see? What's wrong with that? I know they're good." "Sure," Frink said, a little dazed. "I'll see you after work tonight," McCarthy said, "at my apartment. You come over around seven and have dinner with Jean and me, if you can stand the kids." "Okay," Frink said. McCarthy gave him a slap on the shoulder and went off. "I've gone a long way," Frink said to himself, "in the last ten minutes." But he did not feel apprehensive. He felt now excitement. "It sure happened fast," he thought as he walked over to his bench and began collecting his tools. "I guess that's how those kinds of things happen. Opportunity when it comes. All my life, I've waited for this. When the oracle says something must be achieved, it means this. The time is truly great. What is the time now? What is this moment? Six at the top in hexagram eleven changes everything to twenty-six, taming power of the great. Yin becomes Yang, the line moves, and a new moment appears. And I was so off-stride, I didn't even notice. I'll bet that's why I got that terrible line. That's the only way hexagram eleven can change to hexagram twenty-six, by that moving six at the top. So I shouldn't get my ass in such an uproar." But despite his excitement and optimism, he could not get the line completely out of his mind. However, he thought ironically, "I'm making a damn good try. By seven tonight, maybe I'll have managed to forget it like it never happened." He thought, "I sure hope so, because this get-together with Ed is big. He's got some sure-fire idea, I can tell, and I don't intend to find myself left out." Right now, I'm nothing, but if I can swing this, then maybe I can get Juliana back. I know what she wants. She deserves to be married to a man who matters, an important person in the community, not some meshugana. Men used to be men in the old days, before the war, for instance, but all that's gone now. No wonder she roams around from place to place, from man to man, seeking, and not even knowing what it is herself, what her biology needs. But I know, and through this big-time action with McCarthy, whatever it is, I'm going to achieve it for her. At lunchtime, Robert Shilden closed up American Artistic Handcrafts, Inc. Usually, he crossed the street and ate at the coffee shop. In any case, he stayed away no more than half an hour, and today, he was gone only twenty minutes. Memory of his ordeal with Mr. Tagomi and the staff of the trade mission still kept his stomach upset. As he returned to his store, he said to himself, "Perhaps new policy of not making calls. Do all business within store." Two hours showing, much too long, almost four hours in all, too late to reopen store, an entire afternoon to sell one item, one Mickey Mouse watch, expensive treasure, but... He unlocked the store door, propped it open, went to hang up his coat in the rear. When he reemerged, he found that he had a customer, a white man. Well, he thought, surprise.
"Good day, sir," Shilden said, bowing slightly. Probably a Pinnock, slender, rather dark man, well-dressed, fashionable, but not at ease, slight shine of perspiration.
"Good day," the man murmured, moving around the store to inspect the displays. Then, all at once, he approached the counter. He reached into his coat, produced a small, shiny leather card case, set down a multicolored, elaborately-printed card. On the card, the imperial emblem and military insignia, the Navy, Admiral Harusha. Robert Shilden examined it, impressed. "The admiral's ship," the customer explained, "lies in San Francisco Bay at this moment, the carrier Siokaku."
"Ah," Shilden said.
"Admiral Harusha has never before visited the West Coast," the customer explained. "He has many wishes while here, one of which is to pay personal visit to your famous store. All the time in the home islands, he has heard of American Artistic Handcrafts Incorporated." Shilden bowed with delight. "However," the man continued, "due to pressure of appointments, the admiral cannot pay personal visit to your esteemed store, but he has sent me. I am his gentleman."
"The admiral is a collector?" Shilden said, his mind working at top speed.
"He is a lover of the arts. He is a connoisseur, but not a collector. What he desires is for gift purposes. To wit, he wishes to present each officer of his ship a valuable historic artifact, a sidearm of the epic American Civil War." The man paused. "There are twelve officers in all." To himself, Shilden thought, "Twelve Civil War sidearms. Cost to buy her almost ten thousand dollars." He trembled. "As is well-known," the man continued, "your shop sells such priceless antique artifacts from the pages of American history, alas, all too rapidly vanishing into limbo of time." Taking enormous care in his words, he could not afford to lose this, to make one single slip. Shilden said,
"Yes, it is true. Of all the stores in PSA, I possess finest stock imaginable of Civil War weapons. I will be happy to serve Admiral Harusha. Shall I gather superb collection of such and bring aboard the Siokaku? This afternoon, possibly?"
The man said, "No, I should inspect them here." Twelve, Shilden computed. He did not possess twelve. In fact, he had only three, but he could acquire twelve, if luck were with him, through various channels within the week, Air Express from the East, for instance, and local wholesale contacts.
"You, sir," Shilden said, "are knowledgeable in such weapons?"
"Tolerably," the man said. "I have a small collection of hand weapons, including tiny secret pistol made to look like domino, circa eighteen forty."
"Exquisite item," Shilden said, as he went to the locked safe to get several guns for Admiral Harusha's gentleman's inspection.
When he returned, he found the man writing out a bank check. The man paused and said, "The admiral desires to pay in advance, a deposit of fifteen thousand PSA dollars." The room swam before Shilden's eyes, but he managed to keep his voice level. He even made himself sound a trifle bored.
"If you wish. It is not necessary, a mere formality of business."
Laying down a leather-infelt box, he said, "Here is exceptional Colt forty-four of eighteen sixty." He opened the box.
"Black powder and ball. This issued to U.S. Army. Boys in blue carried these into, for instance, second bull run."
For a considerable time, the man examined the Colt forty-four, then lifting his eyes, he said calmly, "Sir, this is an imitation."
"Eh?" Shilden said, not comprehending.
"This piece is no older than six months. Sir, your offering is a fake. I am cast into gloom. But see, the wood here, artificially aged by an acid chemical. What a shame." He laid the gun down. Shilden picked the gun up and stood holding it between his hands. He could think of nothing to say. Turning the gun over and over, he said at last,
"It can't be."
"An imitation of the authentic historic gun, nothing more. I am afraid, sir, you have been deceived, perhaps by some unscrupulous churl. You must report this to the San Francisco Police." The man bowed. "It grieves me. You may have other imitations, too, in your shop. Is it possible, sir, that you, the owner, dealer in such items, cannot distinguish the forgeries from the real?" There was silence. Reaching down, the man picked up the half-completed check which he had been making out. He returned it to his pocket, put his pen away, and bowed. "It is a shame, sir, but I clearly cannot, alas, conduct my business with American Artistic Handcrafts Incorporated. After all, Admiral Harusha will be disappointed. Nevertheless, you can see my position." Shilden stared down at the gun. "Good day, sir," the man said. "Please accept my humbly meant advice. Hire some expert to scrutinize your acquisitions. Your reputation, I am sure you understand."
Shilden mumbled, "Sir, if you could please..."
"Be tranquil, sir. I will not mention this to anyone. I shall tell the admiral that unfortunately, your shop was closed today. After all..." The man paused at the doorway. "We are both, after all, white men." Bowing once more, he departed. Alone, Shilden stood holding the gun. "It can't be," he thought. "But it must be. Good God in heaven, I am ruined. I have lost a fifteen thousand dollar sale, and my reputation, if this gets out. If that man, Admiral Harusha's gentleman, is not discreet..." "I will kill myself," he decided. "I have lost place. I cannot go on. That is a fact." "On the other hand, perhaps that man erred. Perhaps he lied. He was sent by United States Historic Objects to destroy me, or by West Coast Art Exclusives, anyhow, one of my competitors. The gun is no doubt genuine. How can I find out?" Shilden racked his brains.
"Ah, I will have the gun analyzed at the University of California Penology Department. I know someone there, or at least I once did. This matter came up before once: alleged non-authenticity of ancient breech loader." In haste, he telephoned one of the city's bonded messenger and delivery services, told them to send a man over at once. Then he wrapped the gun and wrote out a note to the university lab, telling them to make professional estimate of the gun's age at once and inform him by phone. The delivery man arrived. Chilton gave him the note and parcel, the address, and told him to go by helicopter. The man departed, and Chilton began pacing about his store, waiting, waiting. At three o'clock, the university called.
"Mr. Chilton," the voice said, "you wanted this weapon tested for authenticity, this eighteen sixty Army Model Colt forty-four." A pause while Chilton gripped the phone with apprehension. "Here's the lab report. It's a reproduction cast from plastic molds except for the walnut. Serial number's all wrong. The frame not case-hardened by the cyanide process. Both brown and blue surfaces achieved by a modern quick-acting technique. The whole gun artificially aged, given a treatment to make it appear old and worn."
Chilton said thickly, "The man who brought it to me for appraisal..."
"Tell him he's been taken," the university technician said. "And very taken. It's a good job, done by a real pro. See, the authentic gun was given its, you know, the blue metal parts? Those were put in a box of leather strips sealed with cyanide gas and heated. Too cumbersome nowadays, but this was done on a fairly well-equipped shop. We detected particles of several polishing and finishing compounds, some quite unusual. Now, we can't prove this, but we know there's a regular industry turning out these fakes. There must be. We've seen so many."
"No," Chilton said. "That is only a rumor." "I can state that to you as absolute fact, sir." His voice rose and broke screechingly. "And I am in a position to know. Why do you think I sent it to you? I could perceive its fakery being qualified by years of training, such as this is a rarity, an oddity, actually, a joke, a prank." He broke off, panting. "Thank you for confirming my own observations. You will bill me. Thank you." He rang off at once. Then, without pausing, he got out his records. He began tracing the gun. How had it come to him? From whom? It did come, he discovered, from one of the largest wholesale suppliers in San Francisco, Ray Calvin Associates on Van S. At once, he phoned them. "Let me talk to Mr. Calvin," he said. His voice had now become a trifle steadier. Presently a gruff voice, very busy.
"Yes?"
"This is Bob Chilton at AAA Jink on Montgomery. Ray, I have a matter of delicacy. I wish to see you. Private conference sometime today in your office or et cetera. Believe me, sir, you had better heed my request." Now he discovered he was bellowing into the phone.
"Okay," Ray Calvin said.
"Tell no one. This is absolutely confidential."
"For our car."
"For it is," Chilton said. "At your office. Good day." He slammed the receiver down so furiously that the entire phone fell from the counter to the floor. Kneeling, he gathered it up and replaced it in its spot. There was half an hour ahead before he should start. He had all that time to pace, helpless, waiting. What to do? An idea. He phoned the San Francisco office of the Tokyo Herald on Market Street. "Sirs," he said, "please tell me if the carrier Siokaku is in the harbor, and if so, how long? I would appreciate this information from your estimable newspaper." In agonizing wait, then the girl was back.
"According to our reference room, sir," she said in a giggling voice, "the carrier Siokaku is at the bottom of the Philippine Sea. It was sunk by an American submarine in nineteen forty-five. Any more questions we can help you with, sir?"
Obviously, they, at the newspaper office, appreciated the wild goose variety of prank that had been played on him. He hung up. No carrier Siokaku for seventeen years, probably no Admiral Harusha. The man had been an impostor, and yet, the man had been right. The Colt forty-four was a fake. It did not make sense. Perhaps the man was a speculator. He had been trying to corner the market in Civil War-period sidearms, an expert, and he had recognized the fake. He was the professional of professionals. It would take a professional to know, someone in the business, not a mere collector. Chilton felt a tiny measure of relief. Then few others would detect, perhaps no one else, secret safe. Let matter drop, he considered. No, must investigate. First of all, get back investment, get reimbursement from Ray Calvin, and must have all other artifacts in stock examined by university lab. But suppose many of them are non-authentic? Difficult matter. Only way is this, he decided. He felt grim, even desperate. Go to Ray Calvin, confront him, insist that he pursue matter back to source. Maybe he is innocent, too, maybe not. In any case, tell him no more fakes or I will not buy through him ever again. He will have to absorb the loss, Chilton decided, not I. If he will not, then I will approach other retail dealers, tell them, ruin his reputation. Why should I be ruined alone? Pass it on to those responsible, hand hot potato back along line. But it must be done with utmost secrecy. Keep matter strictly between ourselves.
Chapter Five The telephone call from Ray Calvin puzzled Wyndham Matson. He could not make sense out of it, partly because of Calvin's rapid manner of speech, and partly because at the moment the call came, eleven thirty in the evening, Wyndham Matson was entertaining a lady visitor in his apartment at the Miramachi Hotel. Calvin said, "Look here, my friend, we're sending back that whole last shipment from you people, and I'd send back stuff before that, but we've paid for everything except the last shipment. Your billing date, May eighteenth." Naturally, Wyndham Matson wanted to know why. "They're lousy fakes," Calvin said. "But you knew that?" He was dumbfounded. "I mean, Ray, you've always been aware of the situation." He glanced around. The girl was off somewhere, probably in the powder room. Calvin said, "I knew they were fakes. I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about the lousy part. Look, I'm really not concerned whether some gun you sent us really was used in the Civil War or not. All I care about is that it's a satisfactory Colt forty-four, item whatever it is in your catalog. It has to meet standards. Look, do you know who Robert Chilton is?" "Yes," he had a vague memory, although at the moment he could not quite pin the name down. Somebody important. "He was in here today, to my office. I'm calling from my office, not home. We're still going over it." Anyhow, he came in and rattled off some long account. He was mad as hell, really agitated. Well, evidently some big customer of his, some Jap admiral, came in or had his man come in. Chilton talked about a twenty thousand dollar order, but that's probably an exaggeration. Anyhow, what did happen, I have no cause to doubt this part, is that the Japanese came in, wanted to buy, took one look at one of those Colt forty-four items you people turn out, saw it to be a fake, put his money back in his pants pocket and left. Now, what do you say?" There was nothing that Wyndham Matson could think of to say, but he thought to himself instantly, "It's Frink and McCarthy. They said they'd do something, and this is it." But he could not figure out what they had done. He could not make sense out of Calvin's account. A kind of superstitious fright filled him. Those two, how could they doctor an item made last February? He had presumed they would go to the police, or the newspapers, or even the Pinnock government at SAC, and of course, he had all those taken care of. Eerie. He did not know what to tell Calvin. He mumbled on for what seemed an endless time and at last managed to wind up the conversation and get off the phone. When he hung up, he realized with a start that Rita had come out of the bathroom and had listened to the whole conversation. She had been pacing irritably back and forth, wearing only a black silk slip, her blonde hair falling loosely over her bare, slightly freckled shoulders.
"Tell the police," she said.
Well, he thought, it probably would be cheaper to offer them two thousand or so. They'd accept it. That was probably all they wanted. Little fellows like that thought small. To them, it would seem like a lot. They'd put in their new business, lose it, be broke again inside a month. "No," he said.
"Why not? Blackmail's a crime."
It was hard to explain to her. He was accustomed to paying people. It was part of the overhead, like the utilities, if the sum was small enough. But she did have a point. He molded over. "I'll give them two thousand, but I'll also get in touch with that guy at the Civic Center I know, that police inspector. I'll have them look into both Frink and McCarthy and see if there's anything of use. So if they come back and try again, I'll be able to handle them." For instance, he thought, "Somebody told me Frink's a kike, changed his nose and name. All I have to do is notify the German consul here. Routine business. They'll request the Jap authorities for extradition. They'll gas the bugger as soon as they get him across the demarcation line. I think they've got one of those camps in New York," he thought, "those oven camps."
"I'm surprised," the girl said, "that anyone could blackmail a man of your stature." She eyed him.
"Well, I'll tell you," he said. "This whole damn historicity business is nonsense. Those Japs are bats. I'll prove it." Getting up, he hurried into his study, returned at once with two cigarette lighters, which he set down on the coffee table. "Look at these. Look the same, don't they? Well, listen, one has historicity in it." He grinned at her. "Pick them up. Go ahead. One's worth, oh, maybe forty or fifty thousand dollars on the collector's market." The girl gingerly picked up the two lighters and examined them. "Don't you feel it?" He kidded her. "The historicity?"
She said, "What is historicity?"
"When the thing has history in it. Listen, one of those two zipple lighters was in Franklin D. Roosevelt's pocket when he was assassinated, and one wasn't. One has historicity, a hell of a lot of it, as much as any object ever had, and one has nothing. Can you feel it?" He nudged her. "You can't. You can't tell which is which. There's no mystical plasmic presence, no aura around it."
"Gee," the girl said, awed. "Is that really true, that he had one of those on him that day?"
"Sure, and I know which it is. You see my point. It's all a big racket. They're playing it on themselves. I mean, a gun goes through a famous battle like the Muzar gone, and it's the same as if it hadn't, unless you know." "It's in here," he tapped his head. "In the mind, not the gun. I used to be a collector. In fact, that's how I got into this business. I collected stamps, early British colonies." The girl now stood at the window, her arms folded, gazing out at the lights of downtown San Francisco.
"My mother and dad used to say we wouldn't have lost the war if he had lived," she said.
"Okay," Wyndham Matson went on. "Now suppose, say, last year, the Canadian government, or somebody, anybody, finds the plates from which some old stamp was printed, and the ink, and a supply of..."
"I don't believe either of those two lighters belonged to Franklin Roosevelt," the girl said.
Wyndham Matson giggled. "That's my point. I'd have to prove it to you with some sort of document, a paper of authenticity. And so it's all a fake, a mass delusion. The paper proves its worth, not the object itself."
"Show me the paper."
"Sure." Hopping up, he made his way back into the study. From the wall, he took the Smithsonian Institution's framed certificate. The paper and the lighter had cost him a fortune, but they were worth it, because they enabled him to prove that he was right, that the word "fake" meant nothing really, since the word "authentic" meant nothing really. "A Colt forty-four is a Colt forty-four," he called to the girl as he hurried back into the living room. "It has to do with bore and design, not what it was made. It has to do with..." She held out her hand. He gave her the document.
"So it is genuine," she said finally.
"Yes, this one." He picked up the lighter with a long scratch across its side.
"I think I'd like to go now," the girl said. "I'll see you again some other evening." She set down the document and lighter and moved toward the bedroom where her clothes were.
"Why?" he shouted in agitation, following after her. "You know it's perfectly safe. My wife won't be back for weeks. I explained the whole situation to you. A detached retina."
"It's not that."
"What then?" Rita said.
"Please call a pedicab for me while I dress."
"I'll drive you home," he said grumpily. She dressed, and then, while he got her coat from the closet, she wandered silently about the apartment. She seemed pensive, withdrawn, even a little depressed. The past makes people sad, he realized. "Damn it, why did I have to bring it up? But hell, she's so young. I thought she'd hardly know the name." At the bookcase, she knelt.
"Did you read this?" she asked, taking a book out.
Near-sightedly, he peered. Lurid cover, novel. "No," he said. "My wife got that. She reads a lot." "You should read it." Still feeling disappointed, he grabbed the book, glanced at it. "The Grasshopper Lies Heavy." "Isn't this one of those banned in Boston books?" he said. "Banned through the United States, and in Europe, of course." She had gone to the hall door and stood there now, waiting. "I have heard of this Hawthorne Abelson." But actually, he had not. All he could recall about the book was, "What?" That it was very popular right now, another fad, another mass craze. He bent down and stuck it back on the shelf. "I don't have time to read popular fiction. I'm too busy with work." Secretaries, he thought acidly, read that junk at home alone in bed at night. It stimulates them, instead of the real thing, which they're afraid of, but of course, really crave. "One of those love stories," he said as he solemnly opened the hall door.
"No," she said. "A story about war."
As they walked down the hall to the elevator, she said,
"He says the same thing as my mother and dad."
"Who, that Abelson?"
"That's his theory. If Joe Zangara had missed him, he would have pulled America out of the Depression and armed it so that..."
She broke off. They arrived at the elevator, and other people were waiting. Later, as they drove through the nocturnal traffic in Wyndham Matson's Mercedes-Benz, she resumed.
"Abelson's theory is that Roosevelt would have been a terribly strong president, as strong as Lincoln. He showed it in the year he was president, all those measures he introduced. The book is fiction. I mean, it's in novel form. Roosevelt isn't assassinated in Miami. He goes on and is re-elected in nineteen thirty-six, so he's president until nineteen forty, until during the war. Don't you see? He's still president when Germany attacks England and France and Poland, and he sees all that. He makes America strong. Garner was a really awful president. A lot of what happened was his fault. And then in nineteen forty, instead of Bricker, a Democrat would have been elected."
"According to this, Abelson?" Wyndham Matson broke in. He glanced at the girl beside him. "God, they read a book, he thought, and they spout on forever."
"His theory is that instead of an isolationist like Bricker, in nineteen forty, after Roosevelt, Rexford Tugwell would have been president."
Her smooth face, reflecting the traffic lights, glowed with animation. Her eyes had become large, and she gestured as she talked.
"And he would have been very active in continuing the Roosevelt anti-Nazi policies, so Germany would have been afraid to come to Japan's help in nineteen forty-one. They would not have honored their treaty, do you see?"
Turning toward him on the seat, grabbing his shoulder with intensity, she said,
"And so Germany and Japan would have lost the war."
He laughed. Staring at him, seeking something in his face, he could not tell what, and anyhow, he had to watch the other cars, she said,
"It's not funny. It really would have been like that. The US would have been able to lick the Japanese, and..."
"How?" he broke in.
"He has it all laid out."
For a moment, she was silent.
"It's in fiction form," she said. "Naturally, it's got a lot of fictional parts. I mean, it's got to be entertaining, or people wouldn't read it. It has a human interest theme. There are these two young people, the boys in the American Army, the girl... Well, anyhow, President Tugwell is really smart. He understands what the Japs are going to do." Anxiously, she said, "It's all right to talk about this. The Japs have let it be circulated in the Pacific. I read that a lot of them are reading it. It's popular in the home islands. It stirred up a lot of talk."
Wyndham Matson said, "Listen, what does he say about Pearl Harbor?"
"President Tugwell is so smart that he has all the ships out to sea, so the US fleet isn't destroyed."
"I see."
"So there really isn't any Pearl Harbor. They attack, but all they get is some little boats."
"It's called the Grasshopper something?"
"The Grasshopper Lies Heavy. That's a quote from the Bible."
"And Japan is defeated because there's no Pearl Harbor. Listen, Japan would have won anyhow, even if there had been no Pearl Harbor."
"The US fleet, in his book, keeps them from taking the Philippines and Australia."
"They would have taken them anyhow. Their fleet was superior. I know the Japanese fairly well, and it was their destiny to assume dominance in the Pacific. The US was on the decline ever since World War One. Every country on the Allied side was ruined in that war, morally and spiritually."
"With stubbornness," the girl said. "And if the Germans hadn't taken Malta, Churchill would have stayed in power and guided England to victory."
"How? Where?"
"In North Africa. Churchill would have defeated Rommel, finally."
Wyndham Matson guffawed.
"And once the British had defeated Rommel, they could move their whole army back and up through Turkey to join remnants of Russian armies and make a stand. In the book, they halt the Germans' eastward advance into Russia at some town on the Volga. We never heard of this town, but it really exists because I looked it up in the atlas."
"What's it called?"
"Stalingrad. And the British turned the tide of the war there. So in the book, Rommel never would have linked up with those German armies that came down from Russia, Von Polos's armies, remember? And the Germans never would have been able to go on into the Middle East and get the needed oil, or go into India like they did and link up with the Japanese, and..."
"No strategy on earth could have defeated Erwin Rommel," Wyndham Matson stated. "And no events like this guy dreamed up, this town in Russia very heroically called Stalingrad, no holding action could have done any more than delay the outcome. It couldn't have changed it. Listen, I met Rommel in New York when I was there on business in nineteen forty-eight." Actually, he had only seen the military governor of the USA at a reception in the White House, and at a distance. "What a man! What dignity and bearing! So I know what I'm talking about," he wound up.
"It was a dreadful thing," Rita said. "When General Rommel was relieved of his post, and that awful Lammers was appointed in his place, that's when that murdering in those..." It was a dreadful thing, Rita said, when General Rommel was relieved of his post, and that awful Lammers was appointed in his place, that's when that murdering in those concentration camps really began.
They existed when Rommel was military governor.
But, she gestured, it wasn't official, maybe those SS hoodlums did those acts then, but he wasn't like the rest of them, he was more like those old Prussians, he was harsh.
I'll tell you who really did a good job in the USA, Wyndham Matson said, who you can look to for the economic revival, Albert Speer, not Rommel, and not the organization top. Speer was the best appointment the Partai made in North America, he got all those businesses and corporations and factories, everything going again, and on an efficient basis. I wish we had that out here, as it is, we've got five outfits competing in each field, and a terrific waste, there's nothing more foolish than economic competition.
Rita said. I couldn't live in those work camps, those dorms they have back east, a girlfriend of mine, she lived there, they censored her mail, she couldn't tell me about it until she moved back out here again. They had to get up at six-thirty in the morning to ban music.
You'd get used to it, you'd have clean quarters, adequate food, recreation, medical care provided, what do you want, egg in your beer? Through the cool night fog of San Francisco, his big, German-made car moved quietly. On the floor, Mr. Tagomi sat, his legs folded beneath him, he held a handleless cup of oolong tea, into which he blew now and then as he smiled up at Mr. Baines. You have a lovely place here, Baines said presently. There is a peacefulness here on the Pacific coast, it is completely different from back there. He did not specify. God speaks to man in the sign of the arousing, Mr. Tagomi murmured. Pardon? The oracle, I'm sorry, free-seeking cortical response. War gathering, Baines thought, that's the idiom he means, to himself, he smiled. We are absurd, Mr. Tagomi said, because we live by our five-thousand-year-old book, we set it questions, as if it were alive, it is alive, as is the Christian Bible, many books are actually alive. Not in metaphoric fashion, spirit animates it, do you see? He inspected Mr. Baines' face for his reaction. Carefully phrasing his words, Baines said. I just don't know enough about religion, it's out of my field, I prefer to stick to subjects I have some competence in. As a matter of fact, he was not certain what Mr. Tagomi was talking about. I must be tired, Mr. Baines thought, there has been, since I got here this evening, a sort of gnomish quality about everything, a smaller-than-life quality, with a dash of the droll. What is this five-thousand-year-old book? The Mickey Mouse watch, Mr. Tagomi himself, the fragile cup in Mr. Tagomi's hand, and on the wall facing Mr. Baines, an enormous buffalo head, ugly and menacing. What is that head, he asked suddenly. That, Mr. Tagomi said, is nothing less than creature which sustained the Aboriginal in Bygones days. I see. Shall I demonstrate art of buffalo sleighing? Mr. Tagomi put his cup down on the table and rose to his feet. Here in his own home in the evening, he wore a silk robe, slippers and white cravat. Here I am aboard Iron Horse, he squatted in the air, a cross-lap, crusted Winchester rifle, eighteen sixty-six issue from my collection. He glanced inquiringly at Mr. Baines. You are turtlenecks, sir? Afraid so, Baines said, it is all a little overwhelming for me, a lot of business worries. And other worries, he thought, his head ached, he wondered if the fine IG Farben analgesics were available here on the Pacific coast, he had become accustomed to them for his sinus headaches. We must all have faith in something, Mr. Tagomi said, we cannot know the answers, we cannot see ahead on our own. Mr. Baines nodded. My wife may have something for your head, Mr. Tagomi said, seeing him remove his glasses and rub his forehead. Eye muscles causing pain, pardon me. Bowing, he left the room. What I need is sleep, Baines thought, or night's rest, or is it that I'm not facing this situation, shrinking because it is hard? When Mr. Tagomi returned, carrying a glass of water and some sort of pill, Mr. Baines said. I really am going to have to say goodnight and get to my hotel room, but I want to find out something first, we can discuss it further tomorrow, if that's convenient with you. Have you been told about a third party who is to join us in our discussions? Mr. Tagomi's face registered surprise for an instant, then the surprise vanished and he assumed a careless expression. There was nothing said to that effect, however, it is interesting, of course. From the Home Islands. Ah, Mr. Tagomi said, and this time the surprise did not appear at all, it was totally controlled. An elderly retired businessman, Mr. Baines said, who is journeying by ship, he has been on his way for two weeks now, he has a prejudice against air travel. The quaint elderly, Mr. Tagomi said. His interests keep him informed as to the Home Islands markets, he will be able to give us information, and he was coming to San Francisco for a vacation in any case, it is not terribly important, but it will make our talks more accurate. Yes, Mr. Tagomi said, he can correct errors regarding home market, I have been away two years. Did you want to give me that pill? Starting, Mr. Tagomi glanced down, saw that he still held the pill and water. Excuse me, this is powerful, called Xyacane, manufactured by drug firm in District of China. As he held his palm out, he added, non-habit forming. This old person, Mr. Baines said as he prepared to take the pill, will probably contact your trade mission direct. I will write down his name so that your people will know not to turn him away, I have not met him, but I understand he's a little deaf and a little eccentric, we want to be sure he doesn't become mythed. Mr. Tagomi seemed to understand. He loves Rhododendrons, he'll be happy if you can provide someone to talk to him about them for half an hour or so, while we arrange our meeting, his name, I will write it down. Taking his pill, he got out his pen and wrote. Mister Shinjiro Yatobi, Mr. Tagomi read, accepting the slip of paper, he dutifully put it away in his pocketbook. One more point. Mr. Tagomi slowly picked at the rim of his cup, listening. A delicate trifle, the old gentleman, it is embarrassing, he is almost eighty, some of his ventures toward the end of his career were not successful, do you see? He is not well off any longer, Mr. Tagomi said, and perhaps he draws a pension. That is it, and the pension is painfully small, he therefore augments it by means here and there. A violation of some petty ordinance, Mr. Tagomi said, the home government and its bureaucratic officialdom, I grasp the situation. The old gentleman receives a stipend for his consultation with us, and he does not report it to his pension board, so we must not revere his visit, they are only aware that he takes a vacation. You are a sophisticate, Mr. Baines said. Mr. Tagomi said, this situation has occurred before, we have not in our society solved the problem of the aged, more of which persons occur constantly as medical measures improve. China teaches us rightly to honor the old, however, the Germans cause our neglect to seem close to outright virtue, I understand they murder the old. The Germans, Baines murmured, again rubbing his forehead, had the pill had an effect, he felt a little drowsy. Being from Scandinavia, you no doubt have had much contact with Fechtung Europa, for instance, you embarked at Tempelhof, can one take an attitude like this? You are a neutral, give me your opinion if you will. I don't understand what attitude you mean, Mr. Baines said. Toward the old, the sick, the feeble, the insane, the useless in all variations. Of what use is a newborn baby, some Anglo-Saxon philosopher reputedly asked. I have committed that utterance to memory and contemplated it many times, sir, there is no use, in general. Mr. Baines murmured some sound or other, he made it the noise of a non-committal politeness. Isn't it true, Mr. Tagomi said, that no man should be the instrument for a Navas needs? He leaned forward urgently. Please give me your neutral Scandinavian opinion. I don't know, Mr. Baines said. During the war, Mr. Tagomi said, I held minor post in District of China, in Shanghai, there at Hongqiu, a settlement of Jews, interned by imperial government for duration, kept alive by joint relief. The Nazi minister at Shanghai requested we massacre the Jews, I recall my superior's answer, it was, such is not in accord with humanitarian considerations, they rejected the request as barbaric, it impressed me. I see, Mr. Baines murmured, is he trying to draw me out, he asked himself, now he felt alert, his wits seemed to come together. The Jews, Mr. Tagomi said, were described always by the Nazis as Asian and non-white, sir, the implication was never lost on personages in Japan, even among the war cabinet. I have not ever discussed this with Reich citizens whom I have encountered, Mr. Baines interrupted. Well, I'm not a German, so I can hardly speak for Germany. Standing, he moved toward the door. I will resume the discussion with you tomorrow, please excuse me, I cannot think. But as a matter of fact, his thoughts were now completely clear, I have to get out of here, he realized, this man is pushing me too far. Forgive stupidity of fanaticism, Mr. Tagomi said, at once moving to open the door. Philosophical involvement blinded me to authentic human fact, here. He called something in Japanese and the front door opened, a young Japanese appeared, bowing slightly, glancing at Mr. Baines. My driver, Mr. Baines thought, perhaps my quixotic remarks on the Lufthansa flight, he thought suddenly, to that, whatever his name was, Lotza, got back to the Japanese here somehow, some connection. I wish I hadn't said that to Lotza, he thought, I regret, but it's too late, I am not the right person, not at all, not for this. But then he thought, a Swede would say that to Lotza, it is all right, nothing has gone wrong, I am being overly scrupulous, carrying the habits of the previous situation into this. Actually, I can do a good deal of open talking, that is the fact I have to adapt to. And yet, his conditioning was absolutely against it, the blood in his veins, his bones, his organs rebelled. Open your mouth, he said to himself, something, anything, an opinion, you must if you are to succeed. He said. Perhaps they are driven by some desperate subconscious archetype, in the Jungian sense. Mr. Tagomi nodded. I have read Jung, I understand. They shook hands. I'll telephone you tomorrow morning, Mr. Baines said. Good night, sir, he bowed, and so did Mr. Tagomi. The young, smiling Japanese, stepping forward, said something to Mr. Baines which he could not understand. Eh, Baines said, as he gathered up his overcoat and stepped out onto the porch. Mr. Tagomi said, he is addressing you in Swedish, sir, he has taken a course at Tokyo University on the Thirty Years' War, and is fascinated by your great hero, Gustavus Adolfus. Mr. Tagomi smiled sympathetically. However, it is plain that his attempts to master so alien a linguistic have been hopeless, no doubt he uses one of those phonograph record courses, he is a student, and such courses, being cheap, are quite popular with students. The young Japanese, obviously not understanding English, bowed and smiled. I see, Baines murmured, well, I wish him luck. I have my own linguistic problems, he thought, evidently. Good Lord, the young Japanese student, while driving him to his hotel, would no doubt attempt to converse with him in Swedish the entire way, a language which Mr. Baines barely understood, and then only when it was spoken in the most formal and correct manner. Certainly not when attempted by a young Japanese who tried to pick it up from a phonograph record course. He'll never get through to me, Mr. Baines thought, and he'll keep crying because this is his chance, probably he will never see a Swede again, Mr. Baines groaned inwardly. What an ordeal it was going to be, for both of them.
Context of White Supremacy. Victim of white supremacy, Whoopi Goldberg, she should have read this book perhaps, then she would have maybe had different commentary to offer. Anywho, uh, Cal's Book Club, so that is audio segment one, Philip K. Dick, The Man in the High Castle, so we'll pick up, uh, at the beginning of chapter, oh. Too many crickets got, uh, moved off, there we go, so we'll pick up at the beginning of chapter six. Once we're done with our commentary, the number to dial is seven-two-zero-seven-one-six-seven-three-hundred, the code five-six-four-nine-four-three-pound. Press star-six-one if you would like to participate, the email again, untiljustice@gmail.com. Number is seven-two-zero-seven-one-six-seven-three-hundred, the code five-six-four-nine-four-three-pound. Press star-six-one if you would like to participate. I will share some of the emails, folks heard me from last week, uh, again, we had like, a total rout in terms of, uh, listeners and their feedback for which book they wanted to read, it was not even close, like literally a dozen folks. Man in the High Castle, Man in the High Castle, so we started last week our debut session, uh, and I was, uh, best word to describe, bummed. Disgruntled, uh, about the lack of participation, live participation, we didn't have callers or emails, we had one email, that was it, I think it was just Iri. Uh, this is the first session, uh, so during my grousing last week, that man, it is not, uh, enjoyable at all, uh, to have a robust number of listeners, pick a book, and then not participate, like ew, not fun at all. Uh, so folks did write in, uh, commentary, at least a few folks, uh, so we'll make sure to share all of their commentary for the week. Uh, let's see, email again is untiljustice@gmail.com if you listen to the archives, can't listen live and want to add or contribute as we proceed. Uh, so our first person he wrote in. Number one, uh, being the time of this publication, I assume George Lincoln Rockwell, or similar character, will appear. It looks like the TV show has an airport named after him. Thank you for choosing this read, Gus T. didn't pick this one, listeners did, I look forward to learning more as we go, I understand your frustration with the low participation, I'll try to do what I can. Thanks for all that you do, you are appreciated, that's what they say sometimes. Number one, you, sir, are of American ancestry, although you have gone to the trouble of darkening your skin. He scrutinized Mr. Ramsey, a tan achieved by a sun lamp, Mr. Ramsey murmured, for merely acquiring vitamin D, but his expression of humiliation gave him away. I assure you that I retain authentic roots with, Mr. Ramsey stumbled over the words, I have not cut off all ties with native ethnic patterns. I agree that white people show no shame in tanning their skin, but made it clear that they still believe and practice white supremacy racism. Number two. As to the final, so and I think the tanning in this context is a little different because I think the way that it's being presented here is that since there is no more white supremacy, that this might be kind of the reverse, like how non-white people do all of the bleaching of our skins to mimic the people that are in power, I think that's why this white person is being accused of tanning, so that he can look like he has a little bit more melanin, closer to the people in charge who are non-white people, so-called Japanese, uh, in the Western US, I think that's the context specifically, that the tanning takes on a slightly different form there. Uh, number two, as the final solution of the African problem, we have almost achieved our objectives, unfortunately, however, still, it has taken two hundred years to dispose of the American Aborigines, and Germany has almost done it in Africa in fifteen years, so no criticism was legitimately in order. Children had, in fact, argued it out recently while having lunch with certain of the other merchants, they expected miracles evidently, as if the Nazis could remove the world by magic. No, it was science and technology and that fabulous talent for hard work, the Germans never stopped applying themselves, and when they did a task, they did it right. This book, like the Turner Diaries, makes it seem as if black people can be disposed of much easier than that other race of people. Number three. I like, I will like to see if there are any black people in Nazi, in the Nazi part of the country, the Japanese are portrayed to embrace and imitate white American traditions, including slavery, Jim Crow, and sundown town traditions. Number four. This book introductions, introduces the Germans as superior, smarter, and more forward-thinking than the Japanese. Number five. Golden Poppy Stadium. Make sure we actually got that far, let's see. Let's see, oops. Have so many books on the screen, have to make sure I get the correct one. All righty, make sure. I think we did, yep, we did get there, can share that too. Number... Number five, Golden Poppy Stadium, the baseball park, lots laugh. Yes, they love baseball. Incredible, they have begun work on that great structure for a pastime, an idle, time-wasting sport. Uh, Golden Poppy Stadium, the baseball park, this book infantilizes the Japanese in comparison to the Germans. Absolutely. Number six, I'm not a countryman of yours, Baines said. Oh, yes, that's so, but racially, you're quite close, for all intents and purposes the same. Lots began to stir around in his seat, getting ready to unfasten the elaborate belts. Am I racially kin to this man? Baines wondered. So closely so, that for all intents and purposes, it is the same? This exchange is the German relaying the code to Baines. This shows white people's ability to assimilate because of their skin color. After this conversation, he tries to immediately rationalize the brutality of the Germans. Hmm. That is interesting. Have to ponder about that one. I think there might be a lot of that as we kind of proceed through this book. White people who have so-called assimilated onto the powerful team, German team, white team. Uh, let's see, alright, so that's one, Rodden, Ohio, one person, uh, who wrote in. I'll get one more, and then we'll check the phone lines. Alright, so next up. Okay, okay. Uh, Vegan RD, investor, she writes in. Uh, hi Gus, this book is an alternative universe that still promotes racism, white supremacy. Don't they all? White people, Germans are still glorified despite Japanese having quasi-powers over a section of the area called America. The Japanese are being pushed back by the Germans. Sounds like gentrification. The thought process about sanity was interesting. I think all the examples used by the author are correct. Racism is a system of insanity which poisons all minds and destroys bodies of non-white people. This is due to white people not caring, enjoying their status, hating nature and the Creator, and planning to continue expanding their goal of conquering the known universe. This is a very interesting look into white supremacy racism. By the way, have Germans ever been treated the way they described the Yanks in this book? I don't believe so. I was even thinking that, I think they have a number of accounts of German prisoners of war who were treated better than some Americans, certainly better than Negro citizens at that time, but yeah, I don't, I don't think they had, you know, any sort of, oh, we'll show you, no count, krauts, during all this trouble on the planet and that, I don't, I don't think that happened that way. Uh, let's see, oh, Whoopi Goldberg, shaking my head, she does not know the code, do not discuss racism at work. Anyways, as a non-white person, all I can say is VGQ, victims guaranteed, qualified. Absolutely. And that whole conversation started off on book burning and book banning, which is talked about right here, uh, in the book we're reading currently. Whoopi Goldberg's conversation, I mean, where she got in trouble, they were talking about, uh, getting rid of books in the schools. Uh, I'll stop there, even though we have a few more emails as well. Let's see, folks have commentary, uh, to share, number again, seven two zero seven one six seven three hundred. The code five six four nine four three pound. Press star six one if you would like to participate. Uh, not for, uh, tangents, give out a reminder. Uh, if you have other suggestions for the book club, grand, uh, you can share that on the compensatory call-in, or if you have, uh, other books, uh, that we should check out, other book clubs, anything other than this here book that you all chose, The Man in the High Castle. That's all that we're talking about on this here Thursday. Uh, let's see. Iri in Louisiana, uh, if you have commentary to share, should be with us. I'll nab other hands as I see them.
Hello, everyone. Hotel. Um, I'm a little bit late coming in, but I caught a good little bit. And listening to the book has made me acknowledge how ignorant I am of the specific, uh, action of World War II, as far as who bombed where or invaded where at what time. Um, because they mentioned, uh, well, Japan went to the Philippines, and da-da-da-da, so I'm like, okay, now I gotta look that up to see if that's what actually happened, or something else happened, because I'm thinking the book is meant to be, obviously, well, we all agree on that, it's meant to be a reversal or a flip of if Japan and Germany won that, that conflict. Um, but, you know, there may be, uh, things that he mentioned in the book that actually did happen, but I wouldn't know, and it, it's, the book is pointing out the racism, white supremacy I experienced as food, because there were some things that were taught with specificity and some things that weren't, and I do believe World War II was not one of those things. I'm having trouble, uh, I'm still learning. I'm having trouble deciphering protagonist from antagonist in this book. You can, I think it's, it's possible to have a lead character or characters that are more showcased, per se, but most of the time, there's, you know, a balance that happens between two people, and I'm, I'm having trouble figuring out who that is really, a little bit. Um, I probably just need to listen to the archives. And then the last thing I want to say is, oh, no, two things. Uh, when he, they go between the different types of white people, or excuse me, white pe- people as Europeans, there's a little bit of an admittance from Philip K. Dick that some Europeans aren't as ferocious as others, or am I mistaken? Some, you can let me know, Gus, or other people can let me know. Because when they talk about people that are like Swedes or this or that, it's, it's with a little bit of dismissal, and then they also, like what you said about the guy that tans, it's like, you know, he's not as upright as the Germans. To be ashamed of tanning, you know, with his, uh, body language, you know, is to be a little bit, um, lesser in the pecking order of the other white people, the Germans, who really are in charge, like, like everybody's saying, like, even though on the face it looks like Japan was the, is leading the United States, the Germans still have their white supremacist position. So these other Europeans aren't as supremacist, I guess, I don't know. I don't know what to call it, but they have a certain amount of bashfulness to them that the Germans don't have. And I wonder if that's true in real life to anyone, not just what I think the writer's referring. And then I'm trying to figure out too, is, if ultimately, because I don't want to watch the TV show and cheat, I'm trying to figure out ultimately, is there going to be a moral to this story? Meaning a constructive result in accordance to the code and nature? You know what I'm saying? Something that is gonna solve a problem in real life? To go through all this figurative, you know, and imaginative, imaginative positioning from a racist endeavor, which is World War II? Or is this fandom? That's what I'm trying to figure out, because it sounds like it's fandom. And it's, you know, just this, it's just, it's aggravating that people are so fascinated, white people are so fascinated with not only Germany and Nazis, but keeping it real, going back to real life. They're fascinated with, uh, England as well. Um, maybe i- in different ways, but they like, they like aristocracy, and they definitely like their race soldiers. Their Nazi race soldiers. So I'll mute my line. Thank you.
Much obliged, Iri in Louisiana. Uh, other folks can kind of comment, uh, on some of what she shared as we roll. I'll just get in quick, number one, I guess for Iri and other listeners, because I'm in the same, in this category myself. I have not watched the Amazon series. I've seen literally like one and a half episodes. I think when we started last week, I said I've seen one and a half episodes. In that seven days, I've still only seen one and a half episodes. All of that said, the Amazon series allegedly is very different from the book. Uh, in addition to it being way longer, it's allegedly totally different. It has some of the same characters and what have you, but it's, it's just, it's not the same. Uh, if we have any folks who have seen the Amazon series, you can let us know, but I don't even think that you can cheat. And I was kind of thinking that from a little bit that I have seen, like, this does not quite match up. We, I mean, it's, it's like some, like, okay, Mr. Tagomi, and okay, Juliana, like, okay, but I mean, it's just kind of the basics of the plot and then something else. Uh, the section that you were referring to about, I guess, less ferocious or what have you, I think it was the portion where they were talking about when the killing really escalated in the concentration camps, uh, where it says, because they don't use the word ferocious per se, but it's, uh, the way it's written is, "It was a dreadful thing," Rita said, "when General Rommel was relieved of his post, and the awful, and that awful Lammers was appointed in his place. That's when the murdering in those concentration camps really began. They existed when Rommel was military governor." But, she gestured, "it wasn't official. Maybe those SS hoodlums did those acts then, but he wasn't like the rest of them. He was more like those old Prussians. He was harsh." And then it goes on from there. So I think that's where they're, they're trying to make as though there's some sort of, uh, distinction. Some of them were maybe not quite as bloodthirsty, and you know, you might have had a few rogues here and there, and then this other fellow, um, Lammers, I guess, is, hope I'm saying that right, L-A-M-M-E-Rs, that, oh, man, it's just really, like, you have degrees of white supremacist racist. Uh, anyhow, I guess before Henry in Chicago and the other folks, I'll say also, I think for this book, that's why I was kind of doing a, a head scratch, where you were saying it was kind of difficult to figure out the protagonist and all that. I would assume they gotta be white people, right? Uh, I think Juliana is one, and kind of see as what we're going through, but, uh, and the alternative history of all of this. I think the diverge point for this book where it alternates is the Roosevelt assassination, which they, uh, she, ironically, she mentioned the book, uh, The Grasshopper Sleeps Heavy, which is ironically a real book. Um, but, which, which I think it posits that the South won the Civil War. It's another one of those alternative history books, but anyway, the diverge point is the Roosevelt assassination. That's what has been changed, or that's where things change in this book, from the time Roosevelt is assassinated, he was not, uh, and that changes, and, and then you go out with all these, this alternative. You get more of this, the more you know out of World War II. I was thinking Mr. Fuller might love this. He might have even read it, I don't know. Um, but yeah, obviously, you would get a lot more out of it, because you would know a lot more of the details and what actually happened, and like Stalingrad and all that, and where Germany gets turned back. The more you know about all that, the more you'd know. All of that to say, the folks who are really excited about this book, this is not the sort of book that I think you'd be get any benefit from at all if you're just kind of casually listening. You kind of have to be immersed, uh, in this one to really, because it's so, the word I just gave, it's so wacky. Like, it's no real frame of reference, it's, it's ahistorical purposely, right? So you kind of have to be really immersed to kind of, alright, I'm in this world, and these are all the characters, and, you know, that type of thing. I don't know if we had too many listeners who are really, I love white World War II sci-fi. Like, I don't know how many, and fiction at that, like, hmm, hmm. But we'll see. Uh, Henry in Chicago should be with us as well. Did you have commentary, sir?
Yes, can I be heard?
Yes, sir.
Alright, uh, greetings, Gus, and greetings to all the callers and listeners. Um, I, I wanted to participate last week, I just had another meeting, attend. But, um, this is actually a pretty interesting book. Uh, you know, it's so interesting looking up this author, Philip K. Dick. Um, you know, when he writes alternative history, um, with the last recording, you know, with the last, uh, recording that, you know, just, you just played a few minutes ago, when, uh, the, uh, I guess the Japanese person was trying to purchase World War II antique, I mean, not World War II, but Civil War antique guns. Um, the author, uh, Mr. Dick, was actually inspired to write this book after he read the book Bringing the Jubilee, which is also an alternative history, uh, um, uh, novel where the South won the Civil War. Uh, so, uh, there's been a lot of, uh, you know, there's a lot of, uh, there's actually a couple of other novels where, uh, these alternative histories have happened, you know, with the Germany winning, Germany and Japan winning the World War II, and then also too, the South winning the Civil War. Uh, so, uh, uh, the author was inspired to write this. But you know, it's interesting, um, Philip Dick, you know, suspected white supremacists, doesn't like really, kind of, he doesn't really change in regards to the world that he creates, uh, the system of white supremacy, because it's still the same. Um, but you know, uh, one thing is, is that, I mean, reading the book so far, um, the Germans are kind of like the sub-villains, but you know, obviously, the real villains are kind of like the Japanese. So, you know, these are the non-white people who, you know, have a little power in the world. Um, but I, you know, obviously, the theme is, is that the Germans are kind of like the United States, and, you know, uh, the Japanese are kind of like the Russians, who are not as powerful as the, uh, you know, as the, as the Germans. But, you know, obviously, he doesn't change any of the structure of the system of racism, and he kind of looks at the Germans as, you know, the, the, the only, uh, ethnic colonizers, uh, of, of the world. And so, you know, in order to, you know, colonize non-white people, you know, you have to practice racism, uh, in a, in a militaristic way. And he kind of demonizes the Germans, for one, trying to be the only colonizers on this world, where, you know, in our reality, you know, mostly all white people of ethnic backgrounds colonize, um, you know, non-white spaces in this, uh, in this world. And then two, you know, uh, obviously, all the Africans, well, probably most of the Africans are killed, uh, in this, in this particular world, and, um, white people, you know, they'll kill, you know, non-white black people, but most likely, they'll, they'll be of benefit with them, you know, being, you know, slaves, uh, just like in this book, Japanese have enslaved the, uh, the, uh, black people, which, you know, obviously, he wants to make that point across of Japan being the real enemy. And then also too, he, he kind of makes the Germans villains also because of the fact that they're letting these Japanese people control part of the world, which is not a good thing. Anytime non-white people control any part of the world, it's always disastrous, uh, you know, and it's always, you know, not a good thing. Uh, and two, um, I think last week, they were talking about how the Germans are developing these rockets uh, into outer space and colonizing the moon and, you know, Mars and stuff like that. And it just reminds me of what Elon Musk and Jeff Bezos are doing, trying to, you know, send rockets into outer space, you know, probably destroy the Earth and leave all the non-white people here, and, you know, just go somewhere else and do their damage. But, uh, in a sense, I think the author is trying to drive a point where, um, you know, just like now, uh, the system of racism tries to, uh, kind of deceive you on, these are the real racists over here. The Germans are the real racists, you know, uh, us good white people in the United States, we're not racist, but the Germans are. And you see it kind of play out today, you know. Donald Trump is the real racist, not Joe Biden, so. Uh, but that's what I see in this novel so far, but, uh, I'll continue to listen, but, uh, that's all I have under my line.
Much obliged, Henry in Chicago. Uh, now see, now that's one, watching the Amazon series, not only can you not cheat because it's so dissimilar to the novel, I will, in the one and a half episodes that I've seen, there is a tint, like an explicit tension between the Japanese and the Germans. Like, they have their half of the country, Japan. Like they have their half of the country, Japan, Germany has their half, but it's like flagrant, like this is tenuous. Like the Germans are allowing this for a period of time and then there's going to come a moment when they're like, yeah, you all are niggers too. Get out of here, Japs. We're not, we're taking our country back and we're not parting with it yet. Get over there with the other colored folk. That kind of tension is there very early. I don't know, maybe, you know, we need to keep reading, uh, to see if that tension is in the book, but it's in the series very early on. Um, I had totally forgotten about the slavery, like shackles negroes in slavery, uh, that we did read about in detail last week and they do push that off to the, uh, Japanese people like it's their fault. But that's, you know, it's still the same. Negroes are still shackled and/or being exterminated, uh, on the continent. So it's supposedly different, but not really. Let us see. Caller at zero five two six, oh five two six, did you have commentary?
Uh, can I be heard?
Yes, sir.
Um, greetings Gus, greetings callers and listeners. Um, one part that caught my, um, mind was the, um, part where the person, the narrator is talking about the buffalo head on the, um, wall and that, and the how that, um, just echoes the racist mind and how they like to, um, just collect trophies and, and have, um, items that glorify their, um, domination of planet earth. The, um, just eliminating large numbers of non-white people. Cause, uh, I, for me, that buffalo, that decapitated buffalo head represents their, um, onslaught against the non-white people known as, um, Native Americans. And, and we see here in 2022, they come out with all these gold, um, statues and gold, um, ornaments that they call busts of George Floyd's skull, of Brandon Taylor's skull, and all these famous, um, non-white people or, um, just other, um, racism. And I think those, um, these trophies are, are the same thing. They're just, you know, trophies that, that glorify and let the white supremacists remember and celebrate. Yeah, or do you remember that victim, George Floyd? Remember how we got Brandon Taylor? Do you remember how we got, um, Fergie Douglas on the black, um, busts and trophies? Not, they're not car trophies, but that's why, that's, that's why we do these statues. And that's what that buffalo on the wall reminded me of, how racist men, racist women are really, really slick. Cause they'll make these statues of these heads of these prominent figures. And to me, they're no more than hunting trophies. Now I'm doing that line.
Hmm. Much obliged, uh, the, that's another pretty prominent aspect, like, uh, Henry in Chicago is saying, like this is supposed to be like an alternative universe and sci-fi world and things are kind of the same. White people collecting trophies of dark people and animals that they have slaughtered. Been talking about that for a decade in the book club, all the way back to Yaruguru. I just mentioned Yaruguru earlier today. Dr. Marimba Ani, very first book from the Cows Book Club, and she talked about that in detail. Making trophies of niggers and just people in general, things, animals that they have killed through and through. Uh, let's see. I will read one more email, share a few notes, and then we'll get to our other audio. One of our different investors, she wrote in. Wanted to write down some of my thoughts about Man in the Hot Castle. I don't have page numbers because I don't have the physical book and they aren't in chronological order. That goes for Gus too. The term Penox seems like it's a shortening of Pinocchio, who was a wooden doll, a dummy, something whose strings were being pulled by another. And something I really remember from the story of Pinocchio is that he really wanted to be a real boy. To me, that says a lot. First, that the author thinks that the whites being dominated by non-whites in the text are not real people. Also stands to reason that if he thinks that, he probably thinks, understands that the non-whites beings dominated by whites in reality are not real people or actual women, men. I think in the book Juliana does judo. In the series, she practices Aikido. The internet says that judo is a sport and it has medals and tournaments, many rules that govern matches and that certain moves are not allowed. Aikido is non-competitive, is practiced for self-improvement and effectiveness, self-defense, counter-violence. I don't know a lot about martial arts, Gus, either, but it seems that the difference between judo and Aikido mattered enough to warrant a change from the book to the Amazon series, whatever their reasons were. I am very ignorant about martial arts and about Japanese and Chinese culture in general. All of that said, there is a lot of commentary about this sort of thing right here. Pardon, had to sneeze. When I say this sort of thing right here, meaning these sort of subtle changes that were made to a lot of the different aspects of what they would call Asian culture in the series, uh, the references to I Ching, that's in the book and in the series, and some of the other components and saying this doesn't match. Or they've taken something that is a part of Chinese culture, even though they're attributing it to someone who is Japanese. And there's a lot of that, there's a lot of commentary, uh, if you want to check that out. Uh, or even just thinking about the aspect that, uh, our caller just wrote in, or listener just wrote in about judo versus Aikido. But lots of that to even think about in terms of, you know, what we're reading in the book and then how that would be contrasted or why they would want to make certain omissions in adapting all of this for the Amazon series. Continuing. Uh, when Chilton sees the black people, slaves, coming off the ships and says they are in groups of no more than two or three, it makes me think of something I heard or read about black males being on ships in the past, that if they had large groups of black males, one of them would invariably start to complain about their mistreatment at the hands of whites and would coalesce a large group into a unit that could or would mutiny against whites. But if the whites kept the groups of black males on the ships being mistreated small, no more than two or three, then their racist treatment of black males could continue for much longer periods of time with a lot less resistance, verbal or physical. I did some reading about Philip K. Dick on Wikipedia. Some of the things written about his life sound unusual. Five marriages would be one starter. There is a section called Flight to Canada and Suicide Attempt and Paranormal Experiences that are very interesting, to say the least. He does talk about aliens quite a bit, but so do some of our other cows guests. Uh, he wrote at least forty-four novels and one hundred twenty-one short stories, of which I have read a few. There is a story called Flow My Tears, The Policeman Said, that won the John W. Campbell Memorial Award for Best Science Fiction Novel. In this one, the so-called United States has a second civil war and becomes a police state, whatever that means. Anyway, the reason I brought this up, Philip K. Dick novel, is because in this book, the black population has almost been rendered extinct. I wonder how often this is a theme in his books. It seems to be a very common part of the white psyche. Also, in that book, recreational drug use is widespread and the age of consent for sex has been lowered to twelve. Kind of interesting. These are all very similar tropes in, um, like Daryl Bane and The Turner Diaries, a lot of the other, uh, white sci-fi movies that are out there that depict some kind of dystopian feature, widespread drug use, uh, sexual perversions gone wild and all the rest. And of course, the niggers, ugh, raping and decimated. She continues. Uh, a fink is a finch, a form of bird, and they say birds die. That line stood out to me. I think it said Frank had changed his name from Fink to Frank in the text. And Fink was probably short for Finkelstein, if I know anything about so-called Jewish names. People who say they are Jewish have a history of changing their last names to be more easily accepted as white. That's something that white people gripe about a lot. That's why there are so many with the last name Gold and Silver, Goldberg. It used to be Goldstein and Silverstein until they decided to shorten that up and tried to blend it with people dominating the planet. And Fink can become a verb that means to inform on someone to the authorities or a noun being such an informer also, or it can be used pejoratively to call someone a fink. Uh, I think back in old timey days, that would be the same as calling someone a snitch, like this guy's a rat, this guy's a fink. Uh, let's see. Also, the other Jew in the book, Mr. Baines, also threatens a Nazi by saying he will report him to the higher ups. Maybe the naming of the Frank Fink character and the way he portrays Mr. Baines illustrates how Mr. Dick sees people classified as Jewish. I was thinking that as well. Lots of that is probably coming through, white people fussing, growls about so-called Jews all the time. And especially, this is like sixty years ago, really close to World War Two. So you probably have a lot more of that flagrantly. Uh, also, the way Juliana says she used to often tell Frank that he was ugly is weird. Maybe weird isn't the most accurate term, but it certainly seems incorrect. Why would you tell someone that you cared about such a thing? Is this indicative of what white people actually think and/or feel about non-whites that they, that they dominate sexually? Juliana seems to think that she is very attractive and that Jewish Frank with his big nose and large pores is ugly. Did he fall dead without me? Juliana thinks to herself about Frank. Yo, this lady really thinks highly of herself. Juliana seems to gravitate towards males who look white, but actually aren't classified as white. Frank and the WAP in the diner. I don't think I've ever heard or seen a white person calling a person from Sweden or Scandinavia who immigrates to the US and is without papers, a WAP. There's a lot of name-calling of people classified as non-white in the text so far, and how. Wowzers, more of that to come. That's all I have for right now. I'll try to do some more reading and share my thoughts. I need to go outside and clean the snow. Jesus Lord. Stay warm. So glad we are all done with that here in Seattle. It's been fifty degrees every day. Uh, we have one more email, uh, we'll get to, great commentary, lots to think about, uh, as we proceed with the text. I'll try and see if I can share a few of my notes as well and then maybe we'll push off to the second audio. Uh, let's see. I find it fascinating, uh, that they have this forgery problem, uh, where they can't quite detect which guns are legitimate, which ones are not. And I mean, all of this is like Welzing moment through and through. And they said it's not even just in the gun business. They said that as in the stamp and coin business, no one could possibly estimate the percentage of forgeries in circulation and no one, especially the dealers and the collectors themselves wanted to. Now, this is one I suspect might also be similar to what is actually happening in terms of lots of people in the business of rare coins and everything else. Cause they talk about, uh, paintings that have been forged and all the rest of it. So would not surprise me at all. That's in, in, uh, common language, wooden nickel and all the rest of it. So just something I hadn't really given a lot of thought to. Uh, says an expert could have told the difference, but the Japanese collectors weren't authorities in the proper sense, had no standards or tests, uh, was to judge. I just thought that was another instance of, uh, getting a jab in that, you know, they're not experts. They're not, you know, really intelligent. They can't really discern, uh, at the deepest levels, right? Same thing they were saying about their aerospace program last week. Um, let's see. Uh, okay, so we get this big, lots of commentary on manhood in this whole section. So we have Frank just mentioned. He's talking about trying to get Juliana back, big cores and all. He says, "Right now I'm nothing, but if I can swing this, then maybe Ling get Julia back. I know what she wants. She deserves to be married to a man who matters, an important person in the community, not some meshugana. Men used to be men in the old days, before the war, for instance, but all that's gone now." Now, even, you know, stop right there. Uh, meshugana, uh, what in the world does that even mean? So look that up. Meshugana, um, Yiddish, crazy, mad, insane? Meshugana, make sure I'm getting it right? Who acts crazy or nonsensical? And this is being used to describe someone who is not, not quite measuring up as a manned, as a man. And Julia, Juliana deserves better. He says, "Men used to be men." Man, we just had Dr. Kaborkian on talking all that about nostalgia. I'd say you even hear some of this now, this same type of rhetoric that males, talking about white males have been all emasculated. That was a part of Trump, Trump's, uh, campaign rhetoric, right? Same time that Dr. Welzing was talking about the Amazon paraphernalia, Nazi paraphernalia and all that, two thousand fifteen. We've been emasculated, you know, Me Too and all the rest of it, back when men used to be men. Uh, he continues, "No wonder she roams around from place to place, from man to man, seeking and not even knowing what it is herself, what her biology needs, but I know, and through this big time action with McCarthy, whatever it is, I'm going to achieve it for her." I mean, just, it sounds so, uh, sexualized, uh, here and she, and even in the, the older sense of white masculinity, where I just make all the decisions and I'll decide for this white woman and, you know, dictate what she needs because she doesn't know what's best for her. I'm in a paternalistic patriarchal sense, I need to be back in charge, not some, you know, meshugana, some schmuck. Uh, and she's running around all confused, throwing everything out of order. Sexual vulnerability, talked about that too, of white women. That's a theme that's come up in this book a lot too. Uh, let's see. Uh, so then we have the incident, uh, at the gun shop with the fake. Chilton says, "Valley slightly, probably a Penox." So he thinks this is a white guy, one of those who's cooperating with the Japanese, like, eh, but you know, I'll make a sale. Uh, he's a rather dark man. Maybe he's been tanning too, right? Uh, so they go through this whole charade and then, oh, no, he finds out he's got these fake guns and I'm going to be in trouble and what's going to happen. Uh, again, I find all that to be fascinating. One, uh, the market for old white culture, which, you know, happens now. You have, uh, so-called Japanese and other non-white people who love Elvis Presley and all kinds of, you know, what represents white Americana, the Dallas Cowboys and Sylvester Stallone movies, all the rest of it. Um, just like, you know, in this alternative, uh, universe, but they're trying to get guns and Civil War guns no less. Uh, this is what they want to show off, Dr. Welzing, the great equalizer. And then things have gotten so ridiculous and wacky, we can't even authenticate the guns. Like, oh my gosh, like we've lost the war and our, our, our phallic representations are faulty. Can't even, you know, figure out, uh, which ones are real and which ones are the fakes. Uh, let's see. Let's see. He talks about... All of this fake, he says, "So when Wyndham Mattson", he's got the young lady over, I guess he's cheating on his wife because she's gone or whatever. Uh, and so they're having this big discussion about these, uh, this lighter that he has. He says, "Oh, this was with Roosevelt when he was killed." I said, "That's the diverge point, right, for this book, uh, for where things start to deviate from what actually happened." So he's got this lighter, he's got the two, which one of these is really in his pocket? And how do you know and all this? He says, "I have to prove with some sort of document, a paper of authenticity, and it's all a fake, a mass delusion. The paper proves its worth, not the object himself." From the wall, he took the Smithsonian's Institution's framed certificate. The paper and lighter had cost him a fortune, but they were worth it because they enabled him to prove that he was right, that the word fake meant nothing really, since the word authentic meant nothing really. I thought that was important as well, even reminded me a little bit of nineteen eighty-four. When you have a system where you get to decide what is true, in quotes, uh, and you lie all the time, fake and authentic can end up meaning, you know, what does that really mean? Like we just get to come in and say, well, this one is going to be authentic or this one is going to be fake, or they're all going to be fake or whatever. We come in and set the value of the money, you know? At some point, like everything- some point, like, everything kind of loses value. Uh, when you have a system where you have so much deception and corruption and fraud, everything, Mr. Fuller has that in the word, uh, in the code book, everything becomes kind of worthless when you don't have justice. But I mean, that's just a real, uh, explicit, man, I thought that was an important section right there, too. Uh, let's see. The... The gra- I thought that was important. I'll just, I'll share a little snippet. The Grasshopper Sleeps Heavy, or Lies Heavy, sorry. So, uh, that's the book that they get on this big dialogue about, like, "Oh, it's so crazy." Uh, and even that is, is supposed to be kind of tongue-in-cheek, and look how cute I'm being writing an alternative history book, and then referencing a real alternative history book in the middle of my book, like, oh, how cool I am as a white author. So, the quick synopsis, The Grasshopper Lies Heavy. Nineteen sixty-six, a century after the Confederate States of America won the Civil War. The Cold War rages. The Soviets control the West Coast. The British have the colonies. The Confederacy is a powder keg in the middle. A terrorist attack in dystopian Atlanta lights the fuse. A captain in the KKK grows disillusioned with his country. A widow who won't grieve grows disillusioned with herself. A slave, even in all these alternative histories, she got nigger slaves. Why is that? A slave working at a weapons factory reaches his limits. A British invasion of Black Panthers. A Russian spy hides in plain sight. A president cashes in his chips. The Grasshopper Lies Heavy tells the story of an America on the brink of war, of identity, of starting over. Hmm. I don't know if I wanna read it or not, but, um, hmm. Uh, I guess you can read a snippet online from Chandler Duke is the author, looks like a white, uh, man who wrote this one. Uh, let's see. Anywho, uh... Anything else? Notes that I took from this one? Oh, and this is Grasshopper Lies Heavy is one of the banned books, uh, in the US ban throughout the United States and in Europe, of course. He had gone to the hall, and stood there now waiting. Uh, they all beg, "That's the conversation Whoopi Goldberg got in trouble was about book banning." That's how they hop to all that about so-called Jews and them not being white. Uh, let's see. Anything else? Let's see. Wacky metaphor was used. Uh, they move a little bit further down, and Rita is chatting here. "You get used to it. You'd have clean quarters, adequate food, recreation, medical care provided. What do you want? Egg in your beer?" I'd never heard that, um, metaphor used before. I had to look it up, see what it means. It means you've already got something satisfactory, and now you're asking for more, often undeservedly. So, you got a beer, you should be content, and you want an egg in it, too. Never heard that one before. And that's, uh, when Wyndham, what is it, Wyndham Madison is talking to Rita, and, um, she's saying that she couldn't live, uh, out in the East, uh, where the Germans control. She said, you know, "You have to wake up, they censor your mail, and you have to get up by the bay in the morning." Like, "Ah, I just couldn't take it out there." Uh, let's see. Hmm. I chuckled so much. Whoopi Goldberg one more time. Later on, uh, says, "I see Mr. Baines' murmuring. Is he trying to draw me out? He asked himself. Now he felt alert. His wits seemed to come together. The Jews, Mr. Tagomi said, were described always by the Nazis as Asian and non-white." Again, said, "Man, she could have read, read this one." Uh, that tension, like I said, between the Germans and the Japanese is more apparent in a little bit of the series that I've seen. We'll have to see if it comes, uh, to the forefront in the text. Uh, let's see. Anything else? Oh, this whole conversation when Mr. Tagomi is talking to him, and it, it seems like maybe this is something that shouldn't be said, like, he's not supposed to be talking this explicitly about the racial dynamics of, you know, the Germans looking down on the Jews, and maybe even how they feel, uh, about so-called Japanese, uh, that this is maybe something they're not supposed to be discussing. Uh, and so Mr. Baines, he seems like he gets uncomfortable, like, "Ooh, I, you know, we need to wrap this whole conversation up. Like, let me get, you know, rolling." Uh, and then, you know, later on, he kind of figures out something to say and, and kind of moves on. But I thought that was interesting as well, like, uh, it seems like, you know, it's, it's, uh... Real troublesome environment. Uh, you could easily get in trouble for what you say, uh, or how things are said, or who hears what you say. Like, they might go and rat you out, uh, for that sort of thing. Dangerous environment. Uh, anywho, uh, we will pause here. Uh, if you have additional observations, questions, whatever it is, jot them down. Uh, we will pick up. So, we're at chapter six of Philip K. Dix, The Man in the High Castle. Uh, we will have adequate time to share once this section concludes. Uh, context of white supremacy, we will go ahead and get started. Audio segment two.
Chapter six. Early in the morning, enjoying the cool, bright sunlight, Mrs. Juliana Frink did her grocery shopping. She strolled along the sidewalk, carrying the two brown paper bags, halting at each store to study the window displays. She took her time. Wasn't there something she was supposed to pick up at the drugstore? She wandered in. Her shift at the judo parlor did not begin until noon. This was her free time today. Seating herself on a stool at the counter, she put down her shopping bags and began to go over the different magazines. The new Life she saw had a big article called Television in Europe: Glimpses of Tomorrow. Turning to it, interested, she saw a picture of a German family watching television in their living room. Already, the article said, there was four hours of image broadcast during the day from Berlin. Someday, there would be television stations in all the major European cities, and by nineteen seventy, one would be built in New York. The article showed Reich electronic engineers at the New York site helping the local personnel with their problems. It was easy to tell which were the Germans. They had that healthy, clean, energetic, assured look. The Americans, on the other hand, they just looked like people. They could have been anybody. One of the German technicians could be seen pointing off somewhere, and the Americans were trying to make out what he was pointing at. "I guess their eyesight is better than ours," she decided. "Better diet over the last twenty years. As we've been told, they can see things no one else can. Vitamin A, perhaps?" "I wonder what it's like to sit home in your living room and see the whole world on a little gray glass tube. If those Nazis can fly back and forth between here and Mars, why can't they get television going? I think I'd prefer that, to watch those comedy shows, actually see what Bob Hope and Durante look like, than to walk around on Mars." "Maybe that's it," she thought as she put the magazine back on the rack. "The Nazis have no sense of humor, so why should they want television? Anyhow, they killed most of the really great comedians, because most of them were Jewish. In fact, she realized, they killed off most of the entertainment field. I wonder how Hope gets away with what he says. Of course, he has to broadcast from Canada. It is a little freer up there. But Hope really says things, like the joke about Goring, the one where Goring buys Rome and has it shipped to his mountain retreat and then set up again, and revives Christianity so his pet lions will have something to..."
"Did you want to buy that magazine, miss?"
The little dried-up old man who ran the drugstore called with suspicion. Guiltily, she put down the reader's digest, which she had begun to thumb through. Again, strolling along the sidewalk with her shopping bags, Juliana thought, "Maybe Goring will be the new Fuhrer when that Bormann dies. He seems sort of different from the others. The only way that Bormann got it in the first place was to weasel in when Hitler realized how fast he was going. Old Goring was off in his mountain palace. Goring should have been Fuhrer after Hitler, because it was his Luftwaffe that knocked out those English radar stations and then finished off the RAF. Hitler would have had them bomb London like they did Rotterdam. But probably Goebbels would get it," she decided. "That was what everyone said. As long as that awful Heidrich doesn't, he'd kill us all. He's really bats." "The one I like," she thought, "is that Balder von Schiach. He's the only one who looks normal anyhow, but he hasn't got a chance." Turning, she ascended the steps to the front door of the old wooden building in which she lived. When she unlocked the door of her apartment, she saw Joe Sinadella still lying where she had left him, in the center of the bed, on his stomach, his arms dangling. He was still asleep. "No," she thought. "He can't still be here. The truck's gone. Did he miss it? Obviously." Going into the kitchen, she set her grocery bags on the table among the breakfast dishes. "But did he intend to miss it?" she asked herself. "That's what I wonder. What a peculiar man. He had been so active with her, going on almost all night, and yet it had been as if he were not actually there, doing it but never being aware. Thoughts on something else, maybe?" From habit, she began putting food away in the old GE turret-top refrigerator, and then she began clearing the breakfast table. "Maybe he's done it so much," she decided. "It's second nature. His body makes the motions like mine now as I put these plates in silver in the sink. Could do it with three-fifths of his brain removed, like the leg of a frog in biology class." "Hey," she called. "Wake up." In the bed, Joe stirred, snorted. "Did you hear the Bob Hope Show the other night?" she called. "He told this really funny joke, the one where his German major is interviewing some Martians. The Martians can't provide racial documentation about their grandparents being Aryan, you know, so the German major reports back to Berlin that Mars is populated by Jews." Coming into the living room, where Joe lay in the bed, she said, "And they're about one foot tall and have two heads. You know how Bob Hope goes on." Joe had opened his eyes. He said nothing. He stared at her unwinkingly. His chin, black with stubble, his dark, ache-filled eyes. She also became quiet then. "What is it?" she said at last. "Are you afraid?" "No," she thought. "That's Frank who's afraid. This is, I don't know what." "The rig went on," Joe said, sitting up. "What are you going to do?" She seated herself on the edge of the bed, drying her arms and hands with the dish towel. "I'll catch him on the return. He won't say anything to anybody. He knows I'll do the same for him." "You've done this before?" she asked. Joe did not answer. "You meant to miss it," Juliana said to herself. "I can tell. All at once, I know." "Suppose he takes another route back?" she said. "He always would take fifty, never forty. He had an accident on the forty once. Some horses got out in the road, and he plowed into them, in the Rockies." Picking up his clothes from the chair, he began to dress. "How old are you, Joe?" she asked as she contemplated his naked body. "Thirty-four." Then, she thought, "You must have been in the war." She saw no obvious physical defects. He had, in fact, quite a good, lean body with long legs. Joe, seeing her scrutiny, scowled and turned away. "Can't I watch?" she asked, wondering why not. "All night with him, and then this modesty." "Are we bugs?" she said. "We can't stand the sight of each other in the daylight? We have to squeeze into the walls?" Grunting sourly, he started toward the bathroom in his underpants and socks, rubbing his chin. "This is my home," Juliana thought. "I'm letting you stay here, and yet you won't allow me to look at you. Why do you want to stay, then?" She followed after him into the bathroom. He had begun running hot water in the bowl to shave. On his arm, she saw a tattoo, a blue letter, C. "What's that?" she asked. "Your wife? Connie? Corinne?" Joe, washing his face, said, "Cairo." What an exotic name, she thought with envy, and then she felt herself flush. "I'm really stupid," she said. An Italian, thirty-four years old, from the Nazi part of the world. He had been in the war all right, but on the Axis side, and he had fought at Cairo. The tattoo was their bond, the German and Italian veterans of that campaign, the defeat of the British and Australian Army under General Gott at the hands of Rommel and his Afrika Korps. She left the bathroom, returned to the living room, and began making the bed. Her hands flew. In a neat stack on the chair lay Joe's possessions, clothes, and small suitcase, personal articles. Among them, she noticed a velvet-covered box, a little like a glasses case. Picking it up, she opened it and peeked inside. "You certainly did fight at Cairo," she thought, as she gazed down at the Iron Cross Second Class with the word and the date, June tenth, nineteen forty-five, engraved at its top. "They didn't all get this, only the valiant ones. I wonder what you did. You were only seventeen years old then." Joe appeared at the door of the bathroom just as she lifted the metal from its velvet box. She became aware of him and jumped guiltily, but he did not seem angry. "I was just looking at it," Juliana said. "I've never seen one before. Did Rommel pin it on you himself?" "General Byerlane gave them out. Rommel had already been transferred to England to finish up there." His voice was calm, but his hand, once more, had begun the monotonous pointing at his forehead, fingers digging into his scalp in that combing motion, which seemed to be a chronic nervous take. "Would you tell me about it?" Juliana asked, as he returned to the bathroom at his shaving. As he shaved, and after that, took a long, hot shower, Joe Sinadella told her a little, nothing like the sort of account she would have liked to hear. His two older brothers had served in the Ethiopian campaign, while he, at thirteen, had been in a fascist youth organization in Milan, his hometown. Later, his brothers had joined a crack artillery battery, that of Major Ricardo Parti, and when World War II began, Joe had been able to join them. They had fought under Graziani. Their equipment, especially their tanks, had been dreadful. The British had shot them down, even senior officers, like rabbits. Doors of the tanks had to be held shut with sandbags during battle to keep them from flying open. Major Parti, however, had reclaimed discarded artillery shells, polished and greased them, and fired them. His battery had halted General Vavel's great desperate tank advance in forty-three. "Are your brothers still alive?" Juliana asked. His brothers had been killed in forty-four, strangled with wire by British commandos, the Long Range Desert Group, which had operated behind Axis lines, and which had become especially fanatic during the last phases of the war, when it was clear that the Allies could not win. "How do you feel about the British now?" she asked haltingly. Joe said, "I'd like to see them do to England what they did in Africa." His tone was flat. "But it's been eighteen years," Juliana said. "I know the British especially did terrible things, but..." "They talk about the things the Nazis did to the Jews," Joe said. "The British have done the worse. In the Battle of London..." He became silent. "Those fire weapons, phosphorus and oil, I saw a few of the German troops afterward, boat after boat, burned to a cinder. Those pipes into the water turned the sea to fire, and on civilian populations by those mass firebombing raids that Churchill thought were going to save the war at the last moment. Those terror attacks on Hamburg and Essen and..." "Let's not talk about it," Juliana said. In the kitchen, she started cooking bacon. She turned on the small, white, plastic Emerson radio, which Frank had given her on her birthday. "I'll fix you something to eat." She dialed, trying to find some light, pleasant music. "Look at this," Joe said. In the living room, he sat on the bed, his small suitcase beside him. He had opened it and brought out a ragged, bent book, which showed signs of much handling. He grinned at Juliana. "Come here. You know what somebody says? This man," he indicated the book. "This is very funny. Sit down." He took hold of her arm, drew her down beside him. "I want to read to you. Suppose they had won. What would it be like? We don't have to worry. This man has done all the thinking for us." Opening the book, Joe began turning pages slowly. "The British Empire would control all Europe, all the Mediterranean, no Italy at all, nor Germany either. Bobby's and those funny little soldiers in tall fur hats, and the king as far as the Volga..." In a low voice, Juliana said. "Would that be so bad?" "You read the book?" "No," she admitted, peering to see the cover. She had heard about it, though. A lot of people were reading it. "But Frank and I, my former husband and I, often talked about how it would have been if the Allies had won the war." Joe did not seem to hear her. He was staring down at the copy of The Grasshopper Lies Heavy. "And in this," he went on, "you know how it is that that England wins, beats the Axis?" She shook her head, feeling the growing tension of the man beside her. His chin now had begun to quiver. He licked his lips again and again, dug at his scalp. When he spoke, his voice was hoarse. "He has Italy betray the Axis," Joe said. "Oh," she said. "Italy goes over to the Allies, joins the Anglo-Saxons, and opens up what he calls the soft underbelly of Europe. But that's natural for him to think of that. We all know the cowardly Italian army that ran every time they saw the British drinking vino, happy-go-lucky, not made for fighting. This fellow..." Joe closed the book, turned it around to study the back cover. "Abenzon. I don't blame him. He writes of his fantasy, imagines how the world would be if the Axis had lost. How else could they lose except by Italy being a traitor?" His voice grated. "The Duce. He was a clown. We all know that." He was a clown, we all know that. I have to turn the bacon. She slid away from him and hurried back to the kitchen. Following after her, still carrying the book, Joe went on. And the U S comes in after it licks the Japs. And after the war, the U S and Britain divide the world, exactly like Germany and Japan did in reality. Juliana said. Germany, Japan and Italy. He stared at her. You left out Italy. She faced him calmly. Did you forget too? She said to herself. Like everybody else? The little empire in the Middle East? The musical comedy New Rome? Presently she served him a platter of bacon and eggs, toast and marmalade, coffee. He ate readily. What did they serve you in North Africa? She asked as she too seated herself. Joe said. Dead donkey. That's hideous. With a twisted grin, Joe said. Assino morte. The bully beefcans had the initials A M stamped on them. The Germans called it alterman, old man. He resumed his rapid eating. I would like to read this, Juliana thought as she reached to take the book from under Joe's arm. Will he be here that long? The book had grease on it, pages were torn, finger marks all over it, read by truck drivers on the long haul, she thought. In the one-armed beaneries late at night. I'll bet you're a slow reader, she thought. I'll bet you've been poring over this book for weeks if not months. Opening the book at random, she read. Now in his old age, he viewed tranquility. Domains such as the ancients would have coveted but not comprehended. Ships from the Crimea to Madrid and all the empire, all with the same coin, speech, flag. The great old Union Jack dipping from sunrise to sunset. It had been fulfilled at last, that about the sun and the flag. The only book I carry around, Juliana said, isn't actually a book. It's the oracle, the I Ching. Frank got me hooked on it and I use it all the time to decide. I never let it out of my sight, ever. She closed the copy of The Grasshopper. Want to see it? Want to use it? No, Joe said. Resting her chin on her folded arms on the table's surface and gazing at him sideways, she said. Have you moved in here permanently? And what are you up to? Brooding over the insults, the slanders. You petrify me, she thought, with your hatred of life, but you have something. You're like a little animal, not important but smart. Studying his limited clever dark face, she thought. How could I ever have imagined you as younger than me? But even that's true, your childishness. You are still the baby brother, worshiping your two older brothers and your Major Parti and General Rommel, panting and sweating to break loose and get the Tommies. Do they actually garret your brothers with loops of wire? We heard that, the atrocity stories and photos released after the war. She shuddered. But the British commandos were brought to trial and punished long ago. The radio had ceased playing music. There seemed to be a news program, racket of shortwave from Europe. The voice faded and became garbled. A long pause, nothing at all, just silence. Then the Denver announcer, very clear, close by. She reached to turn the dial, but Joe stopped her hand. News of Chancellor Bormann's death shocked and stunned Germany, which had been assured as recently as yesterday. She and Joe jumped to their feet. All Reich stations canceled scheduled programs and listeners heard the solemn strains of the chorus of the S S Division Das Reich, raised in the anthem of the Partei, the horse vessel lead. Later in Dresden were the acting Partei secretary and chiefs of Sachar Heitzstehst, the National Security Police, which replaced the Gestapo following... Joe turned the volume up. Reorganization of the government at the instigation of the late Reichsführer Himmler, Albert Speer and others. Two weeks of official mourning were declared, and already many shops and businesses have closed, it was reported. As yet no word has come as to the expected convening of the Reichstag, the formal parliament of the Third Reich, whose approval is required. It'll be Heidrich, Joe said. I wish it would be that big blond fellow, that Schirach, she said. Christ, so he finally died. Do you think Schirach has a chance? No, Joe said shortly. Maybe there'll be a civil war now, she said. But those guys are so old now, Goring and Goebbels, all those old party boys. The radio was saying. Reached at his retreat in the Alps near Brenner. Joe said. This'll be Fat Herman. Said merely that he was grief-stricken by the loss, not only of a soldier and patriot and faithful Partei leader, but also, as he has said many times over, of a personal friend, whom one will recall he backed in the interregnum dispute shortly after the war, when it appeared for a time that elements hostile to Herr Bormann's ascension to supreme authority. Juliana shut the radio off. They're just babbling, she said. Why do they use words like that? Those terrible murderers are talked about as if they were like the rest of us. They are like us, Joe said. He receded himself and once more ate. There isn't anything that they would have done we wouldn't have done if we'd been in their places. They saved the world from a communism. We'd be living under red rule now if it wasn't for Germany. We'd be worse off. You're just talking, Juliana said, like the radio, babbling. I've been living under the Nazis, Joe said. I know what it's like. Is that just talk to live twelve, thirteen years, longer than that, almost fifteen years? I got a work card from O T. I worked for Organization Tott since nineteen forty-seven, in North Africa and the U S A. Listen, he jabbed his finger at her. I got the Italian genius for earthworks. O T gave me a higher rating. I wasn't shoveling asphalt and mixing concrete for the autobonds, I was helping design, engineer. One day Doctor Tott came by and inspected what our work crew did. He said to me, you got good hands. That's a big moment, Juliana, dignity of labor. They're not talking only words. Before them, the Nazis, everyone looked down on the manual jobs, myself too, aristocratic. The labor front put an end to that. I seen my own hands for the first time. He spoke so swiftly that his accent began to take over. She had trouble understanding him. We all lived out there in the woods in Upper State New York like brothers, sang songs, marched to work. Spirit of the war, only rebuilding, not breaking down. Those were the best days of all, rebuilding after the war. Fine, clean, long-lasting rows of public buildings block by block, whole new downtown, New York and Baltimore. Now, of course, that works past. Big cartels like a New Jersey Krupp and Sonnen running the show, but that's not Nazi. That's just old European powerful. Worse, are you here, Nazis like Rommel and Tott? A million times better men than industrious like Krupp and bankers, all those Prussians. ought to have been gassed, all those gentleman invests. But Juliana thought, those gentleman invests are in forever. And your idols, Rommel and Doctor Tott, they just came in after hostilities to clear the rubble, build the autobonds, start industry humming. They even let the Jews live, lucky surprise. Amnesty so the Jews could pitch in, until forty-nine anyhow. And then goodbye Tott and Rommel, retire to graze. Don't I know, Juliana thought. Didn't I hear all about it from Frank? You can't tell me anything about life under the Nazis. My husband was, is, a Jew. I know that Doctor Tott was the most modest gentle man that ever lived. I know all he wanted to do was provide work, honest, reputable work, for the millions of bleak-eyed despairing American men and women picking through the ruins after the war. I know he wanted to see medical plans, vacation resorts and adequate housing for everyone, regardless of race. He was a builder, not a thinker. And in most cases he managed to create what he had wanted. He actually got it, but... A preoccupation in the back of her mind now rose decidedly. Joe, this Grasshopper book, isn't it banned on the East Coast? He nodded. How could you be reading it then? Something about it worried her. Don't they still shoot people for reading? It depends on your racial group, on the good old armband. That was so. Slavs, Poles, Puerto Ricans were the most limited as to what they could read, do, listen to. The Anglo-Saxons had it much better. There was public education for their children, and they could go to libraries and museums and concerts. But even so, The Grasshopper was not merely classified. It was forbidden, and to everyone. Joe said. I read it in the toilet, I hid it in a pillow. In fact, I read it because it was banned. You're very brave, she said. Doubtfully, he said. You mean that sarcastically? No. He relaxed a little. It's easy for you people here. You live a safe, purposeless life, nothing to do, nothing to worry about, out of the stream of events, left over from the past, right? His eyes mocked her. You're killing yourself, she said, with cynicism. Your idols got taken away from you one by one, and now you have nothing to give your love to. She held his fork toward him. He accepted it. Eat, she thought, or give up even the biological processes. As he ate, Joe nodded at the book and said. That Abenzen lives around here, according to the cover. In Cheyenne. Guess perspective on the world from such a safe spot, wouldn't you guess? Read what it says, read it aloud. Taking the book, she read the back part of the jacket. He's an ex-serviceman. He was in the U S Marine Corps in World War Two, wounded in England by a Nazi Tiger Tank, a sergeant. It says he's got practically a fortress that he writes in, guns all over the place. Setting the book down, she said. And it doesn't say so here, but I heard someone say that he's almost a sort of paranoid, charged barbed wire around the place and it's set in the mountains, hard to get to. Maybe he's right, Joe said, to live like that after writing that book. The German bigwigs hit the roof when they read it. He was living that way before. He wrote the book there. His place is called... She glanced at the book jacket. The High Castle. That's his pet name for it. They won't get him, Joe said, chewing rapidly. He's on the lookout, smart. She said. I believe he's got a lot of courage to write that book. If the Axis had lost the war, we'd be able to say and write anything we wanted, like we used to. We'd be one country and we'd have a fair legal system, the same one for all of us. To her surprise, he nodded reasonably to that. I don't understand you, she said. What do you believe? What is it you want? You defend those monsters, those freaks who slaughtered the Jews and then you... Despairing, she caught hold of him by the ears. He blinked in surprise and pain as she rose to her feet, tugging him up with her. They faced each other, wheezing, neither able to speak. Let me finish this meal you fixed for me, Joe said at last. Won't you say? You won't tell me? You do know what it is yourself. You understand and you just go on eating, pretending you don't have any idea what I mean. She let go of his ears. They had been twisted until they were now bright red. Empty talk, Joe said. It doesn't matter, like the radio, what you said of it. You know the old brown shirt term for people who spin philosophy? Ierkuff, egghead. Because the big double-domed empty heads break so easily in the street brawls. If you feel like that about me, Juliana said. Why don't you go on? What are you staying here for? His enigmatic grimace chilled her. I wish I had never let him come with me, she thought. And now it's too late. I know I can't get rid of him, he's too strong. Something terrible is happening, she thought, coming out of him, and I seem to be helping it. What's the math or... He reached out, chucked her beneath the chin, stroked her neck, put his fingers under her shirt and pressed her shoulders affectionately. Amud, your problem. I'll analyze you free. They'll call you a Jew analyst, she smiled feebly. Do you want to wind up in an oven? You're scared of the men, right? I don't know. It was possible to tell last night, only because I... He cut his sentence off. Because I took special care to notice your wants. Because you've gone to bed with so many girls, Juliana said, that's what you started to say. But I know I'm right. Listen, I'll never hurt you, Juliana. On my mother's body, I give you my word. I'll be specially considerate. And if you want to make an issue out of my experience, I'll give you the advantage of that. You'll lose your jitters. I can relax you and improve you, in not very much time either. You've just had bad luck. She nodded, cheered a bit, but she still felt cold and sad, and she still did not know quite why. To begin his day, Mr. Nobusuki Tagomi took a moment to be alone. He sat in his office in the Nippon Times Building and contemplated. Already, before he had left his house to come to his office, he had received Ito's report on Mr. Baines. There was no doubt in the young student's mind, Mr. Baines was not a Swede. Mr. Baines was most certainly a German national. But Ito's ability to handle Germanic languages had never impressed either the trade missions or the Tokoka, the Japanese secret police. The fool possibly had sniffed out nothing to speak of, Mr. Tagomi thought to himself. Maladroit enthusiasm combined with romantic doctrines. Detect, always with suspicion. Anyhow, the conference with Mr. Baines and the elderly individual from the home islands would begin soon, in due course, whatever national Mr. Baines was. And Mr. Tagomi liked the man. That was, he decided, conceivably, the basic talent of a man highly placed such as himself. To know a good man when he met him. Intuition about people, cut through all ceremony and outward form, penetrate to the heart. The heart locked within two yin lines of black passion. Strangled sometimes, and yet even then, the light of yang, the flicker at the center. I like him, Mr. Tagomi said to himself. German or Swede? I hope the Zerichain helped his headache. Must recall to inquire first off the bat. His desk intercom buzzed. No, he said brusquely into it. No discussion, this moment for in a truth, introversion. From the tiny speaker, Mr. Ramsey's voice. Sir, news has just come from the press service below. The Reich Chancellor is dead, Martin Bormann. Ramsey's voice popped off. Mr. Tagomi thought. Cancel all business for today. He rose from his desk and paced rapidly back and forth, pressing his hands together. Let me see, dispatch at once formal note to Reich's consul. Minor item, subordinate can accomplish. Deep sorrow, et cetera. All Japan joins with German people in this sad hour. Then, become vitally receptive. Must be in position to receive information from Tokyo instantly. Pressing the intercom button, he said. Mr. Ramsey, be sure we are through to Tokyo. Tell the switchboard girls be alert, must not miscommunication. Yes, sir, Mr. Ramsey said. I will be in my office from now on, thwart all routine matters. Turn back any and all calls whose business is customary. Sir? My hands must be free in case sudden activity is needed. Yes, sir. Half an hour later, at nine, a message arrived from the highest-ranking imperial government official on the West Coast, the Japanese ambassador to the Pacific States of America, the Honorable Baron L B Kadamakule. The Foreign Office had called an extraordinary session at the Embassy Building on Sutter Street, and each trade mission was to send a highly-placed personage to attend. In this case, it meant Mr. Tagomi himself. There was no time to change clothes. Mr. Tagomi hurried to the express elevator, descended to the ground floor, and a moment later was on his way by mission limousine, a black nineteen forty Cadillac driven by an experienced uniformed Chinese chauffeur. At the Embassy Building he found other dignitaries' cars parked roundabout, a dozen in all. Highly-placed worthies, some of whom he knew, some of whom were strangers to him, could be seen ascending the wide steps of the Embassy Building, filing on inside. Mr. Tagomi's chauffeur held the door open, and he stepped out quickly, gripping his briefcase. It was empty because he had no papers to bring, but it was essential to avoid appearance of being mere spectator. He strode up the steps in a manner suggesting a vital role in the happenings, although actually he had not even been told what this meeting would cover. Small knots of personages had gathered, murmured discussions in the lobby. Mr. Tagomi joined several individuals whom he knew, nodding his head and looking with them solemn. An embassy employee appeared presently and directed them into a large hall, chairs set up, folding tight. All persons filed in, seated themselves silently except for coughing and shuffling. Talk had ceased. Toward the front, a gentleman with a handful of papers, making way up to slightly-raised table, striped pants, representative from Foreign Office. Bit of confusion, other personages discussing in low tones, heads bowed together. Sirs, the Foreign Office person said in loud commanding voice. All eyes fixed then on him. As you know, the Reich Counselor is now confirmed as dead. Official statement from Berlin. This meeting, which will not last long, you will soon be able to go back to your offices, is for purposes of informing you of our evaluation of several contending factions in German political life who can now be expected to step forth and engage in no-holds-barred disputation for spot evacuated by Herr Bormann. Briefly, the notables. The foremost, Hermann Goring. Bear with familiar details, please. The fat one, so-called due to body. Originally courageous air ace in First World War, founded Gestapo and held post in Prussian government of vast power. One of the most ruthless early Nazis, yet later sybaritic excesses gave rise to misguided picture of amiable wine-tipling disposition which our government urges you to reject. This man, although said to be unhealthy, possibly even morbidly so in terms of appetites, resembles more the self-gratifying ancient Roman Caesar's, whose power grew rather than abated as age progressed. Lurid picture of this person in toga with pet lions, owning immense castle filled with trophies and art objects is no doubt accurate. Freight trains of stolen valuables made way to his private estates over military needs in wartime. Our evaluation? Our evaluation, this man craves enormous power and is capable of obtaining it. Most self-indulgent of all Nazis, and is in sharp contrast to late H. Himmler, who lived in personal want at low salary. Herr Goring, representative of spoils mentality, using power as means of acquiring personal wealth. Primitive mentality, even vulgar but quite intelligent man, possibly most intelligent of all Nazi chiefs. Object of his drives, self-gloryfication in ancient emperor fashion. Next, Herr J. Goebbels, suffered polio in youth. Originally Catholic, brilliant orator, writer, flexible and fanatic mind, witty, vain, cosmopolitan, much active with ladies, elegant, educated, highly capable, does much work, almost frenzied managerial drive, is said never to rest. Much respected personage, can be charming, but is said to have rabid streak unmatched by other Nazis. Ideological orientation suggesting medieval Jesuitic viewpoint exacerbated by post-romantic Germanic nihilism, considered sole authentic intellectual of the Partei. Had ambitions to be playwright in youth, few friends, not liked by subordinates, but nonetheless highly polished product of many best elements in European culture. Not self-gratification is underlying ambition, but power for its use purely. Organizational attitude in classic Prussian state sense. Herr R. Heidrich. The Foreign Office official paused, glanced up and around at them all, then he resumed. Much younger individual than above, who helped original revolution in nineteen thirty-two. Career man with elite SS, subordinate of H. Himmler. May have played role in Himmler's not-yet-fully-explained death in nineteen forty-eight. Officially eliminated other contestants within police apparatus such as A. Eichmann, W. Schellenberg et al. This man said to be feared by many Partei people. Responsible for controlling Wehrmacht elements after close of hostilities in famous clash between police and army, which led to reorganization of governmental apparatus. Out of all this, the NSDAP emerging victor. Supported M. Bormann throughout, product of elite training and yet anterior to so-called SS castle system. Said to be devoid of effective mentality in traditional sense, enigmatic in terms of drive. Possibly may be said to have view of society which holds human struggle to be a series of games. Peculiar quasi-scientific detachment found also in certain technological circles, not party to ideological disputes. Summation, can be called most modern in mentality, post-enlightenment type, dispensing with so-called necessary illusions such as belief in God, et cetera. Meaning of this so-called realistic mentality cannot be fathomed by social scientists in Tokyo, so this man must be considered a question mark. However, notice of resemblance to deterioration of affectivity in pathological schizophrenia should be made. Mr. Tagomi felt ill as he listened. Balder von Sirach, former head of Hitler Youth, considered idealist, personally attractive in appearance, but considered not highly experienced or competent. Sincere believer in goals of Partei, took responsibility for draining Mediterranean and reclaiming of huge areas of farmland. Also mitigated vicious policies of racial extermination in Slavic lands in early fifties. Pled case directly to German people for remnant of Slavic peoples to exist on reservation-like closed regions in Heartland area. Called for end of certain forms of mercy killings and medical experimentation, but failed here. Dr. Seis Inquart, former Austrian Nazi, now in charge of Reich colonial areas, responsible for colonial policies. Possibly most hated man in Reich territory. Said to have instigated most, if not all, repressive measures dealing with conquered peoples. Worked with Rosenberg for ideological victories of most alarming grandiose type, such as attempt to sterilize entire Russian population remaining after close of hostilities. No facts for certain on this, but considered to be one of several responsible for decision to make Holocaust of African continent, thus creating genocide conditions for Negro population. Possibly closest in temperament to original Fuhrer, A. Hitler. The Foreign Office spokesman ceased his dry, slow recitation. Mr. Tagomi thought, I think I am going mad.
Eh, eh, is enough to drive you bonkers. Uh, so, we are white supremacy racism, that is. So, we are at the close of chapter six. We didn't get all of it. We'll finish chapter six next week, but we got pretty close, uh, to the end of the chapter. Anywho, uh, we'll resume next week, uh, context of white supremacy. The number seven two zero, seven one six, seven three hundred, the code five six four, nine four three, pound, press star six one. If you would like to participate. The only thing that I'll say really quick, uh, I don't think, I'm not a expert on Nazi Germany or World War II, but I think most. Check that. I think all of the names of these Germans that are being mentioned as possible successors are real people. I looked up one or two, some of them I recognized, but I was in, and he has at the beginning about the research of Nazi Germany. I think all of these folks are real people. Uh, enough that I need to research to actually find out the last fella, Dr. Su- uh, I got an F in German. S.E.Y.S.S. hyphen Inquart, I think, I.N.Q.U.A.R.T. Uh, what did this fellow work on? Like, let's see, was he really working on, I mean, they did their, their, uh, genocide programs, uh, on the southern end of the continent. That's in like journals and what have you talked about, we've talked about that before on the program, so, yeah. That might be a homework assignment for people who are reading this book, like, don't watch the television show, like, look up some of these Nazis who are being named and see what they did, like, for real, for real. Seven two zero, seven one six, seven three hundred, the code five six four, nine four three, pound, press star six one. If you would like to participate, much obliged, our caller, uh, one of the folks who was helping me find Masugana. I was going slow, uh, on the first portion of the audio. Uh, let's see, folks who dialed in with a hand up, uh, Henry in Chicago, zero five two six, any other folks? Uh, I will keep an eye out if you all have hands, uh, any commentary of the second portion of the reading? Nothing, sit down maybe, they're pondering? Grand, while folks are thinking, I will make sure I get in all of the emails that folks sent in, unteljustice@gmail.com, unteljustice@gmail.com. Uh, one of our different investors wrote in, and much obliged to all the folks who wrote in, dialed in, uh, yeah, I definitely am much happier camper. Folks are participating, particularly when they select the book. Uh, different investor writes in, uh, greetings, Gus, the text brought to mind controversy regarding the HBO show, which was in production and canceled portraying What If the South Won the Civil War? It was in production in two thousand nineteen, the writers were the same ones who created Game of Thrones, I bet it would have had a large viewership. There's like so many of those, like spoofs and stuff, uh, of what if the South won and what it would, I mean. How much racist imagination do we need? Uh, regarding ethnic categories, maybe the author is speculating that if the Nazis had won, all these ethnic categories would not be completely assimilated into white domination. Uh, Italian, Hispanic, white, the secretary named, uh, Ezekiel, all these goofy names, uh, the Kardashians he's talking about, Armenians. Uh, chapter four, number one. Frank regarded McCarthy, they both knew, WM Corporation turned out a constant flow of forgeries of pre, of pre-war American artifacts. Getting people to crave and accumulate a lot of worthless junk seems to be important in the global system of racism, white supremacy, and being skilled at being able to detect all the forgeries and fakes, uh, in this system. Incidentally, I think that name is important too because this book was published in nineteen sixty-two. Uh, and you just had McCarthyism, uh, happening late nineteen forties on into the fifties, Senator McCarthy about the so-called Red Scare, and that's mentioned, so I think that's probably not um, an accident or coincidence to have someone named McCarthy in this type of book. Anyway, two, uh, a Gresham's Law, the fakes would undermine the value of the real. New York City has a huge market in counterfeits of luxury brands, Gucci, Louis Vuitton, Rolex, et cetera. I'm not sure if it has decreased the price of so-called real things, maybe I don't understand this principle. I don't either, I guess it would have to be like a saturation, I'd have to get somebody to break it down for me. Chapter five, I'll tell you who really did a good job in the USA. Wyndham Mattson said, who can you look to for the economic revival? Albert Speer. At, see, that's what I said, Albert Speer, the Nazi war criminal who was noted for his use of slave labor to increase production, reminds me a little about the rhetoric associated with Donald Trump. He is a psychopath, but man, is he good for the economy. I told you, uh, these are not just idle mention, like, I think a lot of this is well researched, which, you know, they add in of itself. Hmm, hmm. Number two, we have not in our society solved the problem of the aged, more of which persons occur constantly as medical measures improve. China teaches us rightly to honor the old. However, the Germans cause our neglect to seem close to outright virtue. I understand they murder the old. Reminds me of some of the discussions by suspected racists about COVID nineteen. Well, it's just a bunch of old people dying from it. So, why do we need to alter our lifestyle? I do remember that was pretty prominently said, especially when this first started, like, two thousand twenty, like, you know, they're gonna die anyway, they had a good time, like, you know. Right on, time for you to shuffle on outta here, grandma. Well, let's see, chapter six, sorry, didn't mean to laugh at grandparents. Uh, number one, they saved the world from communism. We'd be living under red rule now if it wasn't for Germany. We'd be worse off. Communism, socialism, democracy, the system overriding everything is the global system of racism, white supremacy, according to Neilie Fuller Jr., a man. Number two, The Grasshopper was not merely classified, it was forbidden and to everyone. In the TV show, I think the book was replaced with a movie that was forbidden, 'cause people don't read. Uh, number three, Mr. Tagomi felt ill as he listened. This may be a foreshadowing of bad things to come. Wouldn't surprise me. Uh, let's see, number four. Think along reassuring lines, recall order of world. What to draw on? Religion? He thought, na, agavit, perform sedately. Capital both. Oh, 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 didn't get that far, didn't get that far, sorry, we'll have to pick up there, uh, for next week. Uh, we'll pause right there as they're looking for the new, uh, chancellor. Uh, let me check out some of my notes from the portion that we just read as well. Uh, again, that is my homework assignment, like, that might even be the audio that we start with for next week, like, who is this guy? S.E.Y.S.S. Inquart, I mean, hey, maybe everybody can pick one person, right? And just, who is this person? You know, maybe if you don't know about Joseph Goebbels, who is this guy? You know, I know that guy's written, uh, Herr H.E.R.R.R. Heidrich? I think I've seen that name before, that's a real person. Like, who are these people? What did they do? Uh, what are they known for? Um, maybe, you know, you don't have to do like an extensive five-hour or five-week study, but just like a quick glance, see what information you can find. Uh, before next week, right? We all have a week to kind of check things out. Uh, let's see, some of the notes that I took from chapter six that we didn't even complete. Uh, let's see, they start off. The new life she saw had a big article called The Television in Europe, Glimpse of Tomorrow. Turning to it interested, she saw a picture of a German family watching television in their living room. Already the article said there was four hours of image broadcast during the day from Berlin. Someday, there would be television stations in all the major European cities, and by nineteen seventy, one would be built in New York. Ha, 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 but I mean, the power of this instrument, already seeing that coming, that's, uh, four hours, like, wow. But again, the technological prowess is with the white Germans, not the so-called Asians, which is, you know, I don't want to say ironic, comical, considering the plight of things now. Uh, but the power of television and having people sit around and bragging about having this new piece of technology to show their, their power and modernization. Uh, let's see, this was that the article showed the Reich electronic engineers at the New York site helping the local personnel with their problems. It was easy to tell which were the Germans. They had that healthy, clean, energetic, assured look. The Americans, on the other hand, they just look like people. They could have been anybody, and they mean white people. Uh, all of this, like, just the low morale and, and even their biology is different, uh, not being in a position of domination anymore. Uh, they said one of the German technicians could be seen pointing off somewhere, and the Americans were trying to make out what he was pointing at. I guess their eyesight is better than ours, she decided, better diet over the past twenty years, as we've been told, they can see things no one else can. Vitamin A perhaps? Again, just on so many different layers, and they understand that when you're in a position of, uh, subordination, that's all levels, enormous impact. They understand that about the Negroes as well. Uh, let's see. Go on, maybe that's, she thought as she put the magazines back on the rack. The Nazis have no sense of humor, so why should they want television? Anyhow, they killed most of the great comedians, because most of them were Jewish. In fact, she realized they killed off most of the entertainment field. I wonder how Hope gets away with what he says. Of course, he has to be broadcast from Canada. Now, Bob Hope got mentioned all the time in, uh, Woody Allen's book, uh, the end of last year that we read that as well. Uh, but this, I don't even, I don't even know how to process that, like, that things have gotten that bad, even white people, uh, have to flee to Canada and, and other parts of the world in hiding because they might say something offensive. As I said, you got that environment, you might get in trouble, you know, you might say something, get yourself killed, uh, in this sort of environment, lots of suspicion and snitching, fakes, uh, in this sort of environment, even Bob Hope is not safe. Uh, let's see. Yeah, I don't know who this guy is either, uh, Bald, uh, B.A., B.A.L.D.U.R.V.O.N.S.C.H.I.R.A.C.H. Um, yeah, I think these are real folks, 'cause the context, she says, uh, but probably Goebbels will get it, she decided, that was what everyone said, as long as that awful Heidrich doesn't, he'd kill us all. He really, he's really bats. The one I like, she thought, is that Balder von Sirach. In fact, is this the one that I looked, 'cause I looked up one of these fellows like, right now, let's see, let's just for, for giggles, let's see what pops up, uh, when we search for this fella. Let's see. Well, I did look him up, okay. Balder von Sirach was a Nazi-German politician who is best known for his role as the Nazi Party National Youth Leader and Head of the Hitler Youth from nineteen thirty-one to nineteen forty. He served as the Gallaterier and Reichstallhalter of Vienna. Let's see. Military wars, that's what I said, like, these are like real folks, like, this guy, let's see, he lived until nineteen seventy-four, so way beyond, oh, he might, I think he was at the Nuremberg Trials, did this, oh, he got indicted, this guy got indicted at the Nuremberg Trial. Yeah, see, that might even be worthwhile, like, if you're gonna follow along with this book and people request that we read it, like, take, uh, you know, thirty minutes and just pick out that most of these names are on one page when they're going through who's gonna take over, just take like five minutes and see, you know, who are these people? Were they indicted? Are these war criminals? Like, what, what's listed? And particularly this fellow that is associated with some sort of genocide program against black people, like, oh, yeah, by next Thursday, we should all know some information about this guy. And are the, anybody that watched the television show, are these specific people, like, mentioned in the TV pro, like, are these people brought to life? Do they have a character, Balder von Sirach, if that's how you say it? Is he in the show? Like, what in the hell? Um, like, maybe there was a reason it was so popular. Let's see, anything else that I had? Once again, we got a white person much like Alisebo, where it seems they might have a problem with their nude white body. Where Joe and Juliana, she's watching him and he's upset, gets anxious about her looking at him, and she's like, man, we've had sex and everything, and now you're gonna be all modest and upset about all this? Welsing moment again, uh, she asks him about this book again, uh, The Grasshopper that. Welzing moment again, uh, she asks him about this book again, uh, The Grasshopper that sleeps, or whatever it is, that's, um, this alternate history that's supposed to be banned. Uh, she says, "How could you be reading it? Something about it worried her. Don't they still shoot people for reading? It depends on your racial group." What? Now, they got some books, I guess, that are so dangerous that nobody can have them regardless of what your racial classification, but I mean, wow, things are so racially stratified that they have some books, if you're classified as white, you can read and access, and some books, you could be executed, but like, what? Let me repeat Dr. Welzing again, reading is more important than watching television, my goodness. Uh, let's see. Oh, I thought this was important too, we had, it's so much done for performance here, some of it, I guess, because there's so much suspicion and thinking and snitching on people, but, and you can't, you know, have a, a Negro slave see you carrying something and all of this, so much has gotta be, you know, done for the, the sake of display and who's gonna see you. So, this is Tagomi now, at the embassy building, he found other dignitaries' cars parked around about a dozen in all, highly placed worthies, some of whom he knew, some of whom were strangers to him, could be seen ascending the wide steps of the embassy building, filling on inside, filing on inside. Mr. Tagomi's chauffeur held the door open and he stepped out quickly, gripping his briefcase, it was empty because he had no papers to bring, but it was essential to avoid the appearance of being a mere, uh-oh, spectator, even in this alternative universe, that's one thing I can appreciate, don't wanna be a spectator, that's not a good look. He strode up the steps in a manner suggesting a vital role in the happenings, although he had not even been told what this meeting would cover. Now, I mean, you talk about bakeries and lack of authenticity, I mean, gosh, I, I gotta fake the briefcase and everything, look like I'm in, I don't even know what we're talking about, man. What's the meeting about today? I have no idea, but I gotta look and for, make sure the Negroes don't see me, kinda, like, what is going on? I'd be feeling bad too, all the time, like, you got all this craziness going on. Uh, let's see, something else, uh, 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 the self, the fat one, when they're talking about Hermann Goring, uh, let's see, they said that his object of his drives self-glorification in ancient emperor fashion. I said, that is like as clear as you can get from Mr. Fuller, what does he said? That's the whole gadget, object of white supremacy racism, uh, fun, personal glory, like, and to be, to make every individual classified as white, a king, a queen to themselves, like that, I mean, it just does not get any more flagrant than that right there. Uh, let's see, make sure we didn't miss, the caller oh five two six, uh, did you have commentary you wanted to sneak in before we get ready to wrap things up, sir?
Hi, greetings Gus, greetings callers and listeners. Um, this book, this type of book, this genre, um, um, makes me realize that, um, this is very common, um, white people are creating, um, fantasies about, well, what, what would have happened if, um, the Nazis won? Wouldn't that have been, um, really great for the system and white supremacy if we'd have, um, allowed that to happen, or the, the white people who are wanting that to happen would have, um, uh, succeeded? Okay, this is a video game, super, super popular video game called Wolfenstein, and it keeps getting remade over and over and over, and I, and that video game is about what would have happened if the Nazis won, you know, you get to go kill, um, uh, Hitler, mechanized Hitler for four different video games, and it just goes to show that, um, uh, white people are really, um, um, nothing new in this system, that they recycle the same ideas, but what I am seeing from this book is that, um, this is really, um, displaying how white people are just masters of, like, strategies, uh, and, um, and how they have, um, just organized themselves around, like, a war, race and white supremacy of the war, uh, against us, and, um, just have hearing and, and, uh, all these concepts really, um, known as areas, but, um, very, 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 very interesting, and I'll meet my line.
Let us see, much obliged, zero five two six, uh, being Santa Rosa? Just listening, did you have any comments that you were gonna get in there, being Santa
Hello, can I be heard?
Yes, sir.
Hi, um, uh, good evening, everybody, um, I'm having a hard time, like, um, grasping, like, what's going on because it's so flip-flop, that I'm having a hard time imagining and seeing what's going on, like, like, uh, the other lady said earlier, who is who and what is what, it's just so backwards. Um, uh, another thing I noticed is that white people aren't ignorant about what's going on because of the flip-flop of, of the roles of, uh, uh, of being dominated by, um, the Japanese and, and their mistreatment, and, and that puts a stamp to let me know that even in their writing, they understand what they're doing and how they doing it by flip-flop the roles. Um, that's all, thank you.
Much obliged, being Santa Rosa. Uh, I thought that it would be kind of a tussle, like, uh, it's one of those, like, man, because, and then you've got, like, all the crazy, if you're just listening, you got all these crazy accents you have to kind of wade through, 'cause that kind of helps inform about, okay, is this a white person, non-white person, is this German, and all the, is this a Jewish person, so-called, like, it's a lot to try to piece together, uh, within all of this, and is this like a real bit of history? Is this something made up? Like, it's a lot to kind of keep moving and, uh, process together. Uh, it's definitely one of those, I think it's, it's helpful, or it can be helpful to have the book there with you so you can kind of like, oh, okay, this, this the character from, who's where we are to kind of follow everything, but yeah, I thought kind of challenging, uh, yes, I don't know about the TV show, if it's, you know, difficult to watch or, or to follow, or what have you, but yes, little bit on the challenging side, uh, wacky sci-fi universe, but it's not a very long book, and by next week, we'll be halfway done, so, hopefully by next week, we'll be a little bit more comfortable, we'll have heard the characters a little bit more, and it'll make sense, but that'll be my homework assignment. Let us look up some of these mentioned, uh, Nazis in the texts and see what they did. Who are these folks? Anywhos, uh, we'll be here tomorrow for neutralizing workplace racism, Saturday for the compensatory call-in. Much obliged for folks, uh, participating, hopefully it is worthy of your time and energy, especially for all the folks who wanted us to check out this here book. Uh, sobriety would be best under conditions of white supremacy. Uh, we will need high-functioning brain computers to solve this problem. In addition to being sober, if you're out and about, you are sober, buckled, not on the cell phone, doing the small things that we can to stay as safe as possible and minimizing contact with race soldiers, badge or no. All of that said, Creator, we ask that you help us remain patient with other black people, victims of white supremacy. We ask that you help us remain patient with ourselves. Remind us to demonstrate the highest levels of black self-respect at all times, in all places, each and every time we are in contact with another black person. It has been time, replace white supremacy with justice immediately. Cal signing out. Thanks all for tuning in.